In Elysian Park, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The gun buyback event has traditionally been held on Mother's Day weekend, but was moved up to May 4th. Since the program started in 2009, people have turned in nearly 10,000 unwanted firearms. Practically everyone owns a pair of jeans, but the popular denim wear takes on a whole new meaning as individuals worldwide don denim to raise awareness about rape and sexual violence. Anna Marcos explains what Denim Day is all about.
It may look like a day for office casual, but all these pairs of jeans are out to make more than a fashion statement. These women and men in blue are out to stamp out rape and sexual violence as they celebrate the 14th annual Denim Day in LA.
We wear jeans as a visible demonstration of protest against misconceptions that surround sexual assault.
Denim Day was born in Italy 14 years ago after a judge ruled a rape victim was to blame for her rape because she was wearing tight jeans. The next day, Italian parliament members showed up to work in jeans as a protest. Soon, LA and other cities around the world joined in.
From New Delhi to New York, from Chicago to the Congo, from Karachi to Steubenville, from Miramonte Elementary School, and now to Occidental College, rape is a local and global, national and international issue and affects us all.
The fight against rape in LA has made progress with rapes down by more than a third since 2005, and the backlog of rape cases has been wiped out. Rape kits are now analyzed within 30 days to provide speedier justice for the victims.
Rape, domestic violence are extremely under-reported crimes. And they're not under-reported because the victims think they have no consequence. They're under-reported because the victims are in fear.
Denim Day has taken on new meaning in light of recent rape cases in places like Ohio and San Francisco where teens posted images of sexual attacks online.
We do a lot of youth programming with prevention with the Los Angeles Unified School District, Pasadena Unified, and Alhambra Unified to really educate students on what is a healthy relationship, what is sexual violence, what is sexual harassment, what is teen dating violence, so that we can build a violence-free Los Angeles.
The denim movement has now grown to 6 million people worldwide. Its goal: to hunt down sexual violence so it no longer claims more victims. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on how the city is fighting domestic and sexual violence, visit safelA.org. Those who live near LAX don't just have to contend with the noise above, they have to contend with a big problem right under their feet: buckling sidewalks. Now, a big makeover is underway that promises to beautify the neighborhood near the world's sixth busiest airport. This spiffy stretch of Sepulveda Boulevard near the Los Angeles International Airport does have sidewalks, but tell that to the area's pedestrians and joggers.
We don't want our buckling sidewalks. We don't want the city to see street routes that erupt, that are unsafe, and our citizens can't walk down Sepulveda Boulevard.
Sheila Mickelson, a Westchester resident, was the force behind what will soon take place. Thanks to federal funding, the help of community organizations, and an agreement with the nearby Howard Hughes Development, preparations are finally underway to begin work on the Westchester Streetscape Improvement Project, transforming Sepulveda Boulevard from 80th Street to 84th Place with 42 new trees, meandering sidewalks, and 1,600 feet of landscaping.
I'm a little emotional. It's been over 10 years with this project.
Congresswoman Maxine Waters recalls Mickelson and another Westchester resident reaching out to her for help.
It was back in 2006 that Sheila Mickelson and Barbara Musella of the Westchester Streetscape Improvement Association first approached me to discuss how they and other community leaders felt that the condition of Sepulveda Boulevard was an embarrassment to the city of Los Angeles.
Councilman Bill Rosendahl, standing in front of one of the worst stretches of sidewalks in the city, says all the thanks go to the determined residents and Congresswoman Waters.
Maxine, you are a fighter for what's right. And when you put a million bucks up out of the federal government and said, "Go ahead and get going and fix up that disastrous entrance to Los Angeles," that was the catalyst.
This is the first neighborhood that many travelers see upon arriving at LAX and the last one they see before they depart our city. This is a vibrant community that is often called "the gateway to Los Angeles."
And the hope is, soon, those who pass through the world's sixth busiest airport will be welcomed with a streetscape worthy of this world-class destination city. The sidewalk project is expected to start this fall. So many people come from all over the world in pursuit of the arts, and to celebrate the arts, hundreds of arts advocates came out to City Hall for Arts Day 2013. Here is Cindy San Luis.
The city of Los Angeles was built on entertainment, and Arts Day is an annual opportunity for Angelenos to celebrate the contributions of arts and culture to the community and to talk with their elected officials about why the arts are important.
It allowed me to grow, to be a creative thinker, to improvise, problem-solving, and a lot of the problems that I face now seem really easy, having had that opportunity to think outside the box.
Let's hear it for the arts!
Nearly 400 arts advocates convened at City Hall to celebrate Arts Day 2013. The council chamber was flooded with a sea of red as a few hundred people donned special Arts Day t-shirts in support of the festivities.
We're the blood of this city, that we are the creative capital, and that we fuel it.
Now in its second year, Arts Day unites artists, audiences, and arts organizations with the leaders who represent them in City Hall.
We wanted to strengthen the relationship between arts practitioners and their elected officials.
Who we are, this is what we do, we advocate for arts.
Arts Day delegates also attended a workshop to learn about the etiquette of meeting with elected officials, followed by lunch with Mayor Antonio Varegosa.
Arts and culture are part of a fabric of a community that can make it live and thrive and be a safe community as well.
Arts Day is an opportunity to highlight the contributions of the arts to all spheres of life, from education to business, public safety to health care, to transportation to innovation.
Arts for LA hopes events like this will bring continued support and investment to the city's creative community. From City Hall, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
The Los Angeles Mayor's Council on Innovation and Industry recently revealed our city has the second-largest population of artists in the United States. Improvements coming to the communities along the Gold Line Eastside Extension. LAX is looking to fill 80 retail positions, and poll workers are still needed for the May 21st elections. These stories and more in City Beat. Councilmember Jose Wezar, the Department of Public Works and Metro recently broke ground in Boyle Heights for a $12 million pedestrian improvement project in and around four stations of the Metro Gold Line Eastside Extension along First Street. Wezar says the Eastside Access Improvement Project will enhance pedestrian and ridership experience and support local business and the Boyle Heights Arts District. Specifically, the project will transform Bailey Street into an extension of the Mariachi Plaza Station, creating a pedestrian connection from the plaza to Pennsylvania Avenue and Bailey Street. Actor and comedian Russell Brand made an appearance in council chambers recently to announce his intentions to bring rehab services to the vacant building in Pacoima that used to house another rehab program, People in Progress. Brand is himself a recovering addict.
Whilst superficially there are some ugly aspects to the disease of addiction and the condition of homelessness, what I see there is tremendous potential, tremendous potential for change.
I offered to provide the $500,000 over there so they could rehab the facility and create 26 jobs, permanent jobs, in the process.
The city council approved reallocating $500,000 in community development block grants from Alarcon's District to help jump-start the project, which is actually outside of Alarcon's District. Los Angeles International Airport is holding a job fair to fill 80 retail store positions for new high-end retail duty-free stores, opening this summer in the new Tom Bradley International Terminal. Duty-Free Shops, or DFS, one of the world's leading luxury retailers for the traveling public in airports, is seeking bilingual employees to fill 50 sales associate and 30 beauty advisor positions for cosmetic and fragrance brands. Go to lawa.org/bjrc to apply online. Interviews will be conducted on May 6th in the Flight Path Museum near the airport. Walk-ins are also welcome from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m. The election division of the Office of the City Clerk is seeking additional poll workers for the May 21st general municipal and special elections, 1,300 more to be exact. Spanish or Korean bilingual poll workers are especially needed. In all, the election division expects to place approximately 6,400 poll workers to work at the various polling locations. Poll workers earn stipends for each election day they work and for attending a training class. For more information on qualifications, call the election division's poll worker recruitment hotline toll-free at 866-899-VOTE. An orange grove belonging to the Department of Water and Power is being used for greater good. Its fruits will now be donated to the area's needy families. Rasha Goel has more.
A 9.8-acre area within the Franklin Canyon Park in Los Angeles has been restored thanks to a donation from the David Bonnet Foundation.
Each one of us can make a difference in our community through a donation, large or small, a dollar or more, to the LA Parks Foundation.
Known as the Franklin Canyon Orange Grove Park, the site will be maintained to provide sustainable food to help feed families in need. The Department of Water and Power is leasing the land to the Department of Recreation and Parks.
This is a historic grove, and a combination with an organization that makes sure this is not just looking at fruit, it's edible fruit. Working with the Department of Water and Power on a special agreement, we've had this new grove.
Through the donation, 168 new Valencia orange trees have been added to the existing orange grove.
There were about 34 trees that we had to remove because they hadn't been properly irrigated. We put in all-new irrigation.
Those in need are already benefiting from the fruitful production. Recently, volunteers from Food Forward, an urban hunger nonprofit organization, were here to pick from the first harvest to help serve those in need.
They harvest and then donate to over 50 agencies who are feeding folks, whether they're shelters, or their food banks, or their after-school programs.
And residents are also looking forward to the enhanced area being a positive influence in their community.
I think that's absolutely wonderful. It goes kind of further than this neighborhood to help people.
We are adding parks within the city at places that need it, at places that should be, inherited sites like this.
And for those wondering how many oranges these trees will bring, we are told a normal fruit tree can yield anywhere from 300 to 500 pounds. That means this orchard can expect oranges in the thousands. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
There are a total of 246 orange trees throughout the grove, which will be harvested four times a year. In this week's List of Things to Do, a Chinatown Walking Tour, the city's latest gun buyback program, and a photography exhibit at a Venice gallery. There's always something new to learn about our city, and on Saturday, May 4th, you can learn all about Chinatown during the Chinatown Walking Tour. The walk from noon to 2:00 begins at 900 North Broadway in front of the Little Joe's Restaurant sign. This walk, led by Mike Sonksen, a third-generation LA native, K-C-E-T columnist, and longtime tour guide, will explore the temples, unique storefronts, and cultural landmarks found in this historic neighborhood. You must first RSVP via the Craft and Folk Art Museum by emailing RSVP@cafam.org. And a reminder that the city is hosting its latest gun buyback program on Saturday, May 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at four different locations. You can find the locations and addresses by going to our Facebook page at facebook.com/lathe This Week. You can drop off unwanted firearms, no questions asked, in exchange for a supermarket gift card in the amount of $100 or $200, depending on the weapon turned in. And for a bit of art and culture, you have from now until Sunday, May 5th, to catch the En Foco, or In Focus, National Traveling Exhibit on view at the Venice Arts Gallery located at 1702 Lincoln Boulevard in Venice. The exhibit highlights the photographic visions of 56 artists affiliated with the New York-based nonprofit En Foco over the past four decades. En Foco is dedicated to promoting cultural diversity in the field of photography. This is the exhibition's only Los Angeles stop on its national tour. For more details, go to venicearts.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It's not every day you get to go downhill skateboarding on city streets, at least not in a safe way. But recently, several city streets in San Pedro were blocked off so skateboarders could enjoy the ultimate thrill ride. Yana Kay explains.
These kids are doing what they love: skateboarding.
I do downhill. It's gonna be sick. I do it all the time, like every day.
It's all part of the first-ever San Pedro Skate Festival, which blocked off several city streets to create a temporary closed course for all the skaters to enjoy, free from cars, pedestrians, and bicyclists.
What I heard from the skateboard community is they wanted to have a venue, a safe, controlled environment for them to downhill skate, where it's controlled and also gives us an opportunity to focus on the importance of safety as well.
With the support of Councilman Joe Buscaino's office, the Festival of Skate brought together the skateboarding community to promote the sport while giving skaters a chance to have fun on a safe downhill course.
Because I like to skate.
For parents, they say this event gives them peace of mind.
I'd rather be here supporting him, knowing that it's in a safer environment than him being out in the streets where there's cars and it's not blocked off, and it's just safer here.
A safe place where skateboarders can engage their need for speed. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
Councilmember Joe Buscaino says he wants to bring the Festival of Skate to other locations around Los Angeles. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Illegal dumping? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Clean water means preserving an LA icon. Echo Park is probably best known for the lotus that bloom every year in the lake, but with water pollution and other factors, it really led to a disappearance and a decline of the lotus. But with the passage of Prop. 0 in 2004, we received money to dredge the lake and make it a better place for the native wildlife that live here, and of course, for the lotus. Rehabilitating the lake has really helped us preserve an LA icon.
Hi, this is Rabbi Mensah of Chabad of Bel Air, living in the great city of angels.
Let's turn on the cameras, guys. Again, good morning. We're now live on Channel 35. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Now, members, you know that out of all of the members, I probably do the least number of presentations. But today, I want to start things off with a university, the university that I attended. Mr. Weezer, when I applied to go to college, my grades were so bad, they would send my application and check back. This university was the one university that said, "If you come here a month early and participate in a program that we call LIFT, we'll accept you." Changed my life. It is historically the oldest African-American college in the United States of America. It was founded in 1854, and it was called Ashmam Institute. In 1866, after Lincoln freed the slaves, they changed the name to Lincoln University. I was telling the young people here today that I still have a miniature of my college diploma in my wallet. They're out here on a concert tour. Oh, and just let me give you a couple of names of some of our alumni: Thurgood Marshall, Langston Hughes, and me. It doesn't get much better than that. So the choir from Lincoln University, as we're trying to put a quorum together, I'm going to ask them to please come up and sing. Mr. Director, in fact, we have Professor Coleman and Professor Meacham, I believe. Give them a round of applause. Don't they look good? They arrived here on Monday, and they will be leaving this Monday. Lincoln University is 36 miles away from Philadelphia, and I want to say about 52 miles from Baltimore. When I was there, we had 1,100 students, and it wasn't our boy's school, and it converted to be co-ed. Mr. Coleman? Mr. Coleman, the floor is yours, sir.
Good morning. We'll be performing two pieces for you today. The first piece is entitled "O Manu Misterium", which means "Oh, great mystery".
Magnificent. One more, Mr. Coleman, one more.
The next piece we'll perform for you is a spiritual entitled "Daniel, Daniel, Servants of the Lord", by Undine Smith Moore. O the King cried, "Oh, Daniel, Daniel, oh! Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh! Adalde, Hebrew, Daniel, servants of the Lord!" O the King cried, "Oh, Daniel, Daniel, oh! Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh! Adalde, Hebrew, Daniel, servants of the Lord!" Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh! On the Hebrew nation, on Hebrew Daniel was found. He stood in the middle of the lion's den. He stayed there all night long. O the King cried, "Oh, Daniel, Daniel, oh! Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh! Adalde, Hebrew, servants of the Lord!" Now the king in his sleep was troubled, and early in the morning he woke to find that had sent his angel to the royal church. O the King cried, "Oh, Daniel, Daniel, oh! Adalde, Hebrew, Daniel, servants of the Lord!" O the King cried, "Oh, Daniel, Daniel, oh! Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh! Daniel, oh, Daniel, oh! Adalde, Hebrew, Daniel, servants of the Lord! The servants of the Lord! The servants of the Lord!"
Let's give it up for my alma mater, Lincoln University Concert Choir. Okay, Professor Coleman, I'm going to meet you guys in the back, and we'll take a picture on the steps. In fact, one more round of applause. My alma mater, Lincoln University, the oldest African-American college in the United States of America. Okay, we do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, could we please call the roll?
Alarcon Busqueño, Englander, Garcia, Weezer, Corretes, Corian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston. Eleven members present a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Rosendahl moves, Zion seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves, Englander seconds. Next, that brings us where?
To the agenda. Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Item 1(c) may be received and filed inasmuch as the property is a single-family dwelling and not eligible for lien confirmation.
Without objection.
That leaves Items 1(a) and 1(b), and there are cards.
Okay, we'll hold it. Go on to the next.
Items 2, 3, 11 are items which public hearings have been held. There is request to continue Items 7 to May 7.
Without objection. Okay, members specials? Seeing no specials, Bill? We're not at 16 yet. So let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Fourth with on five, six, and nine? Five, six, and eight. Okay, next section?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I was a little too slow on the draw. If I could ask that Item 3 be called special?
Okay, then we have to vote on reconsideration of those items. Let's... This vote is on reconsideration. Mr. Labange? If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we'll hold Item 3 at the request of Councilmember Corretes, and we'll revote on the other items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes. Seven ayes.
Okay, so now let's move on to the next section.
Items 12 through 16 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Rosendahl had indicated that he wanted to hold Item 16. Any other specials, members? Any other specials? Okay, we have cards?
Cards on Items 12 through 16.
Okay, well, then we'll hold all of those items. That brings us where?
On the continuation agenda, Item 17 is an item which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that is now before us. Cards?
No cards.
Okay, members special? Okay, let's prepare to vote on 17. Let's open the roll. Is there a problem, Mr. City Attorney? Mr. Corritian? Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking me a question, but...
No, could somebody verify?
As long as I'm up, I, like Mr. Corretes, was a little slow in asking for Number 2 to be called special.
Now, don't we have to waive the rules in order to do that at the end? Because we'd have to reconsider Item 2 for the second time? We didn't... Okay, so let's vote on...
And 4 as well, please, Mr. President.
So what I want to do with 17 is hold it till I get some clarification. Okay, so let's go...
Two and 4.
Two and 4? Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item, I want to call Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer is ready. From the 14th District, a district that has some of the greatest bridges in the whole city. Thank you. A big hand for Mr. Weezer, please. We see the Council General from Mexico here. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. I'm really excited as folks come up here and join the dais about a special presentation to a number of individuals as we celebrate Cinco de Mayo here in Los Angeles. And Cinco de Mayo is a date of great importance, as you all know, to the Mexican-American community and to all Mexicans. And for those of you who don't know, the history of Cinco de Mayo refers to a battle that took place near the capital of Ciudad Puebla in the Mexican state of the same name when 5,000 ill-equipped mestizo and sapotec Indians defeated the better armed and trained French army on May 5, 1862, 151 years ago. The Battle of Puebla, as many of you know, came to represent a symbol of Mexican unity and pride. And today, in honor of Cinco de Mayo, we will recognize two extraordinary individuals who have been very supportive of the poblano community in Los Angeles and of the Mexican and Latino community in the United States. It is our pleasure to honor our Mexican General Counsel of Los Angeles, David Figueroa, who has been a great friend and whose term is ending on May 31st. I'll say a little bit more about him later. We are also recognizing Dr. David Hayes-Bautista, who has written extensively about Cinco de Mayo and educated a lot of us about the celebrations or origins here in California and in the United States. But before I introduce these two wonderful and well-deserving individuals, I would like to recognize Don Pedro Ramos, Lourdes Juárez, and other members of the Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior for their great work they do on behalf of our Mexican immigrant community and keeping the traditions of their great state of Puebla alive here in Los Angeles. We honored Unión de Poblanos last year during the Cinco de Mayo festivities in Los Angeles, and we worked with them to bring in these two worthy individuals we're honoring today. So before we go on, I'd like to introduce to you Don Pedro, who will share a few words. Don Pedro?
Thank you. Necesita traducción?
Sí. Can we have a translator, please?
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Buenos días, Honorable Council of the Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Good morning, Honorable Council of the Ciudad of Los Angeles.
A nuestra diputada estatal que nos visita desde Puebla, Miriam Galindo.
And our people that is visiting from Puebla, Mrs. Galindo.
Mi nombre es Pedro Ramos, fundador de la Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior.
My name is Pedro Ramos, and I am the president of the foundation, the Union of Poblanos.
En el Exterior.
In the exterior.
Es para mí un honor reconocer el trabajo de verdaderos hombres.
For me, it's an honor to recognize the work of men.
Que han cambiado el rumbo de la historia.
That have changed the history.
Empezando por nuestro gran amigo de la comunidad.
Starting with our great friend of our community.
Como es el concejal José Weezer.
Like Councilmember José Weezer.
Como tradicionalmente, en cada año, en alusión al Cinco de Mayo.
Every year, traditionally, when we celebrate the 5th of May.
Como es la batalla de Puebla.
And the Battle of Puebla.
Nos encontramos aquí los poblanos.
Us the poblanos, we meet here.
Y poder, pues dejar el gran triunfo que cambió la historia de México y los Estados Unidos.
To celebrate the great triumph that changed the history of Mexico and the United States.
En este marco de la gloriosa batalla de Puebla.
After this glorious battle of Puebla.
Queremos reconocer a dos líderes indiscutibles.
We want to recognize two magnificent leaders.
Como es el doctor David Hayes-Bautista.
Doctor David Hayes-Bautista.
And the Mexico Council General, David Figueroa Ortega.
And the Mexico Council of Mexico, David Figueroa.
Que como hombres cabales y de lucha.
That as men that fight.
Como lo hiciera nuestro general Ignacio Zaragoza.
Like our general Ignacio Zaragoza did.
Para derrotar cualquier obstáculo por muy grande que parezca.
Yes, to try to fight against all the obstacles, even though they were big.
El doctor David Hayes-Bautista.
Doctor David Hayes-Bautista.
Es un hombre que con su investigación ha descubierto.
Is a man that has discovered with his research.
Por qué se celebra el Cinco de Mayo en los Estados Unidos.
Why do we celebrate Cinco de Mayo in the United States?
Y por eso los poblanos y mexicanos agradecemos su esfuerzo y su dedicación.
And that is why poblanos and Mexicans, we are very thankful for his dedication and collaboration.
Nuestro Council de México, David Figueroa Ortega.
Our Mexican Council, David Figueroa Ortega.
Simplemente el mejor que ha llegado a Los Ángeles.
Simply, he's the best that came to Los Angeles.
Con su gran vocación de servicio.
With his great vocation to serve.
A nuestra comunidad y sin lugar a dudas.
To serve our community, and without doubt.
Dejará un vacío en su partida.
He's going to leave an empty space when he leaves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to recognize a representative from the governor of Puebla, Miriam Galindo Petris, President of the Tourist Commission of Puebla. I want to thank her for joining us here all the way from Puebla, along with other delegates who have joined us today and will be with us this Sunday as we celebrate the festivities at El Pueblo, Placita Alvera. And Miriam, will you share a few words with us, please? Unas palabras, por favor.
Thank you. Muchas gracias. Con el permiso de los señores concejales.
Thank you very much, with due respect to the council members.
La coordinación estatal de asuntos internacionales y de apoyo a migrantes poblanos.
The coordination of exterior affairs to the poblanos.
Por conducto del doctor Miguel Jaquín y del gobernador del estado, doctor Rafael Moreno Valle.
Through Mr. Doctor Jaquín and to the...
The doctor Miguel Jaquín, the senior governor.
And Mr. Governor Miguel Valle.
Moreno Valle. Entregamos este reconocimiento al concejal por el 14avo Distrito del Condado de Los Ángeles, California.
We're going to give this recognition to the council member of the 14th District of the Ciudad of Los Angeles in California.
José Weezer.
José Weezer.
Por su destacada contribución al mejoramiento de las comunidades latinas, mexicanas, y poblanas.
For his great contribution to the development of the Latin communities, Mexican and poblana communities.
Y por todo el apoyo que les ha otorgado en los espacios para que ellos puedan llevar a cabo sus actividades.
And for everything that he has granted for them to be able to carry on with his activities.
Pues nuestro más alto reconocimiento y muchas felicitaciones.
Our highest recognition and congratulations.
Thank you. Gracias. Thank you, gracias. Well, thank you very much, and I accept this really on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, who continues to allow us to express our culture, to be proud of where we come from. And, sir, we've often said that our diversity is our strength here in this great city, where we have so many people who work here with a strong... Come here to this great city with a strong work ethic to make lives better for themselves and their family. But at the end of the day, they not only achieve that and achieve the American dream, but they contribute to the great culture, mixes of culture that we have here in Los Angeles. Muchísimas gracias. Lo agradezco mucho. And, Mr. President, do you know when the independence of Mexico was? Do you know when that was?
Yes, I do.
When was that?
In September 60th.
Thank you very much.
Is that right?
And the reason I ask that... And the reason I ask that is not only that Mr. Labange, our historian here, wanted to verify it, but you know, Cinco de Mayo is often confused as we're celebrating the independence of Mexico, but it is not. And we, as I mentioned earlier in my remarks, it was at the Battle with the French in Puebla, when the French were here to occupy Mexico for a debt owed to them. But it is now our honor to recognize an individual who not only has pointed that out more so in his research, but also has explained to us in his book how Cinco de Mayo not only originated in the way we celebrate Cinco de Mayo originated in the United States, but also why it has become to be so widely celebrated in the United States. I am speaking about Dr. David Hayes-Bautista, and we want to honor him for his contributions and research in identifying the significance of the battle and how it has shifted over the years. His research has revealed that Mexicans and Mexican-Americans began celebrating Cinco de Mayo during the Civil War. And he will talk a little bit about that in just a bit. But aside from that, I do want to mention a little bit more about his background. He has groundbreaking research on the history and role of the Battle of Puebla. He has also published research that has been instrumental in focusing and advocating for the health, well-being, and cultural preservation of Latinos in California. And I am honored that he has done that work as well. When I was a student at UC Berkeley, his research was some of the few research that was really out there about Latinos and health, and he has been the expert in that field for many, many years. He also is, he is the Director of the Center for the Latino Study of Latino Health and Culture at UCLA. Mr. Kretz, he's a big Bruin fan, so...
Bruin.
Well, go Bruins. So without further ado, let me present to you our honorary for Cinco de Mayo, Dr. Hayes-Bautista.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish the chorus had stayed here because there's a direct linkage between this chorus from Lincoln University and the reason why we are celebrating Cinco de Mayo this weekend. And it has to do with the fact that Latinos created the celebration of Cinco de Mayo, as we know it, 151 years ago, here in Los Angeles, two blocks to the north of here, of the City Hall. I'm so sorry. Because Latinos wanted to make a public statement as to where Latinos in the United States stood on the issues of the Civil War. That Latinos opposed slavery and supported freedom. That Latinos opposed white supremacy and supported racial equality. That Latinos opposed elitist forms of government and supported democracy. These were political values shared between Mexico and the United States. They were the political values that undergirded El Pueblo de Los Ángeles while it was part of Mexico, and it has continued to be values important to both countries to this day. This is why we celebrate El Cinco de Mayo. It is an American Civil War celebration. Thank you very much. And the doctor has published a book on that subject, and it's very interesting reading. Indeed, I will recommend everyone who's interested in knowing more about this to please read that book. And also today, we recognize with a heavy heart a great public servant. We recognize him with a heavy heart because he is also leaving his post as Council General of Mexico here in the United States. He is a man who has become a great friend of mine, a great friend of the city, and a great friend of the poblanos. I am speaking of none other than Council General David Figueroa Ortega. He has been our Mexican Council General here in Los Angeles for just two years. But let me tell you, it seems more like ten years, given the work he has done. He has taken incredible strides in serving this community. And in my opinion, just like our good friend Don Pedro mentioned, he has been by far one of the best Council Generals the City of Los Angeles has seen in a very, very long time. David Figueroa is truly a humble and genuine man of the people. Under his leadership, the quality and quantity of the council-led services have increased, and the Mexican consulate is more than ever involved in important health and education initiatives. Born in Sonora, Mexico, he has a lifelong list of service in Mexico and the United States. And like me, his father was a bracero, and I share a lot in common, and I know that he will do well wherever he goes. He, when he came here as Council General, he not only exhibited a great need to want to serve the community, but also we found out very early on that he was bi-cultural, which is a new phenomenon that's happening for many, many of us. I'm sure he will continue to serve the Mexican people with the same dedication and energy that we were fortunate to witness firsthand here in the City of Los Angeles. We hope he visits us often, and we would definitely keep in contact with him. Ladies and gentlemen, Council General for Mexico here in the City of Los Angeles, David Figueroa Ortega.
Muy buenos días. Gran gusto estar acá. Honorable City Council President Herb Weston. Honorable Councilmembers of the City of Los Angeles. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Muy buenos días para todos ustedes. I would like to thank Councilmember Jose Weezer for the proclamation presented today in my honor. It has been a privilege to serve my country in Los Angeles and this vibrant Mexican community. During these two years, I had the opportunity to witness very closely the hard work and wonderful contributions of Mexicans to the city and county of Los Angeles, which motivated me to work harder every day. I am also grateful to building new relationships and strengthening the consulate's involvement with local authorities, electoral officials, and leaders of community organizations and businesses. Without doubt, I found a great support and appreciation for Mexico and Mexicans. Thank you all for your support, and I hope to see you one day in Sonora, where you will have a friend. Muchas gracias a todas y a todos ustedes por darme esta oportunidad de despedirme aquí en el Concilio de los Ángeles, donde me voy profundamente agradecido de todos ustedes, de mis amigos concejales, del gran liderazgo de Jose Weezer, que siempre pone en alto el nombre de nuestro país, y por supuesto también muy contento y agradecido por esta gran representación de los mexicanos que a diario construyen, construyen este país y desde luego a diario construyen a nuestro México desde el exterior. Muchas gracias y que Dios los bendiga a todos.
Congratulations, Council General. My best to your family, especially those at St. Brennan's. Beautiful man.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Council General, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we want to thank you for your services to not only Mexicans in the United States, but certainly improving the lives of one people is improving the lives of all Angelenos. You have been someone who I've seen in hospitals visiting sick people to meeting with presidents when they come visit this country. You are a man of the people with a strong vision of what both the United States and Mexico could be all about. Thank you so much on behalf of the City of Los Angeles for your service. And you are welcome back anytime, and we know we will see you often. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And to a great academic researcher who was a pioneer for his time in the type of research he was doing on behalf of Latinos, who not only explained the growing population that we are witnessing today many, many decades ago and the importance of ensuring that Latinos had good healthcare, not only for their well-being, but for the well-being of all of us. And now to really come out with this book about Cinco de Mayo that not only expresses our further pride about being Mexican and the pride we have by showing that no matter where you start off in life, no matter what you have around you, you could always make the best of it, whether it means beating the French in battle or coming to this country for a better life. Mexicans have continued to battle obstacle after obstacle, and your research has shown us now even more so how the Mexicans were on the right side during the Civil War. And we have a lot more in common with the United States than people think we may have. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, Dr. Hayes-Bautista, thank you for your service on the Cinco de Mayo 2013.
Mr. Weezer.
Yes, sir.
We have a Councilmember, Zine, who would like to say some remarks.
Thank you. And our Council General, my good friend, you are a national person. Maybe because Carlos Slim, Lebanese like me, lives in Mexico. And I know we have dined at the Lebanese restaurant and the Latino restaurant. I didn't know you were leaving. I didn't know that you were departing the great city of the angels. And you've done so much outreach. And I can remember an event at the headquarters where people were signing up donor information, transplant, to help people. You have embraced this community in such a positive way. And I know you and your family have enjoyed staying here. I am shocked to hear you leaving because you've done such great networking and building within this community. Personally, I hate to see you go, but I remember our dining experiences, and it's always been an exciting, wonderful time. And it's interesting, as we come together and celebrate, that Congress is debating, hopefully, to come in with some immigration reforms so we can get a pathway that we're looking for, we've been looking for for a long time. And when I went to Washington and testified before Congress on trying to make this happen, this departure from the city of the angels, maybe there's a blessing at the end where we will finally come to an end of this fragmentation that we've had with families and immigration enforcement to come with what we really need to do is embrace people and bring them together, which is what you've done as the Council General, is embrace people and broaden together. It doesn't matter whether they're Latino or not. But I just want to pass my congratulations on to you. And I will get your number because if I ever venture down there on my motorcycle rides, I'll definitely look you up. And you're always welcome here in the city of the angels. And to everyone else who's gathered, I represent a huge Latino community out in the San Fernando Valley. They will be celebrating this particular weekend. I will be joining them in the celebrations. But welcome, and my good friend Jose Weezer, thank you for bringing it forward. And all of you, congratulations for being here. Our heart and soul's with you and the great people you represent. And, Doctor, congratulations to you for the good work you've done and the beautiful queen, princess... Queen, princess, whatever. You're beautiful, so congratulations to you too. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Yeah, and I've come back down here just to say some beautiful things about everybody. What a great day. Just one thing I wanted to say for the French, though. They did give us the greatest gift that any country got, the Statue of Liberty. The Statue of Liberty that welcomes the people to this country, and it's so special. I just had to say something good about the French. God bless the French, God bless the Mexicans, and God bless everyone in the USA, and the Brits too. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as the doctor mentioned, my good friend and who I often call my brother, Herb Weston, you know, we have a lot more in common than we thought we have to the celebration of Cinco de Mayo as it was proven that the Mexicans were supporting the North to end slavery at that time. And so, my brother, we have a lot more in common than you think we do. But thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen, I invite you all to come out this Sunday at Placita Alvera from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to celebrate Cinco de Mayo. The poblanos have put on a great show each and every year. Some of you might be saying, "Well, didn't you just have Fiesta Friday, Sunday?" But you know the Mexicans, we love fiestas. So thank you so much. Have a good day, and happy Cinco de Mayo.
Happy Cinco de Mayo to us all.
Can you...
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl. So what we're gonna do here, when the center out is cleared, we will take up item... What item is it? Sixteen? Item sixteen. And have a presentation at the same time.
Right behind you. How are you, sweetie? Hey. Sure, of course. On the other side. Tommy wants to be here, too.
Okay, we're on item sixteen. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a resolution, colleagues, that if you do approve it, we will have an amazing senior fraud awareness day on May 15th. It's very appropriate for me to be standing here with seniors, as I am one, and all a group right behind me. I'd like to read the resolution so you all know exactly what we're talking about. And then I'm gonna have a couple of people say a few words. The resolution, colleagues, that's in front of you, says, "Whereas, as the population ages and more Americans become senior citizens with nest eggs, there are being greater targets for fraud and deception. The ease of access for criminals by contact seniors through the internet and telephone increases as more creative schemes emerge. Whereas senior fraud is a growing concern as millions have fallen victims to Medicare scams, sweepstakes, and lottery scams, investment and work-at-home scams, bereavement scams, identity theft, charity scams, granny scams, home repair scams. Seniors average one scam-type letter and two telemarketing phone calls per week. Whereas senior fraud is underreported due to the older adults' embarrassment and lack of information on where to report such fraud. And whereas approximately five million cases of financial exploitation of the elderly in the United States occur each year, and the financial loss by victims is more than $2.9 billion annually. And whereas caregivers, caregivers, folks, con artists, and unscrupulous salespersons are the primary instigation of senior fraud. The tactics used are intimidation, fear, friendliness, authority, and control to get the victim to send money or share private financial information. And whereas, unfortunately, this is the last whereas, because there's a lot more, folks, seniors own more than half of all the financial assets in America and are consequently the primary targets for fraudulent practices. It is estimated by the U.S. Subcommittee on Health and Long-Term Care that seniors represent 30% of scam victims. Therefore, the Stop Senior Scams program is made up of 35 students from the Los Angeles Unified School District's Program for Older Adults who perform educational skits at numerous venues in order to inform the public about current scams that target the older adult population. Now, therefore, it be resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council hereby declares May 15th, 2013, a senior fraud awareness day in the City of Los Angeles. And just sidebar, colleagues, I didn't know this, but you know, May 15th is my birthday, and if I make it to May 15th, I'll be 68, and I plan to make it to May 15th.
My money's on you, Bill.
It even becomes a personal thing for me, where before it was just the general reality of seniors being ripped off constantly. Now, I'd like to have a few people come up.
Before you do that, I'd like to have Mr. Zine, Mr. Zine speak.
No, I'm looking for him. Oh, there he is.
I'm right here, Bill.
Come on over, Dennis. You should be in this. You co-signed it. You've been fighting for seniors all your life, and you're becoming a senior. Look at you. You can't stop the clock.
One of you. Thank you. I, uh, thank you, Bill. I did second this, and this is something that pertains to every person who reaches those what should be happy golden years where you're financially secure and people look out for you instead of ripping you off. And I know with my experience with the Los Angeles Police Department, many seniors are ripped off not only by outsiders, but sometimes from family members. And they are very, very vulnerable members of our society. We need to be cognizant of that. We need to keep them informed, aware. Identity theft is exploding. Many seniors are victims of identity theft because when you get to the senior age, you want to trust people. You think that you've made it to that point in life where you want to trust people. But sadly, in our society, there's people you cannot trust. So a word of caution to all the seniors, as I join the seniors that are all here. It's interesting, when you reach 50 years of age, you start getting the mail, they want to give you glasses. And then after that, it's hearing aids. And then you start hearing from Forest Lawn and the Neptune Society. It's no longer Baskin Robbins, little birthday cards to go get a free ice cream cone.
That's right.
But we need to recognize the senior population that is growing. The healthcare is improving. They're living longer and longer. And as the former president, the executive of the Jewish Home for the Aging, many folks out there over 90 years of age and some over 100. But they are extremely vulnerable population that we need to be supportive and helpful. And hopefully, this information will penetrate, and they will understand what the consequences are when they're not aware. So I want to congratulate... So I want to congratulate my colleague. Have you reached that age yet?
Not quite.
Okay. Paul's not there, he's getting there. But Bill and I have reached that golden point. When you reach 65, you're then on Medicare, and we know what happens with the medical situation. So thank you, Bill. Be happy to, I was happy to second this. And to the seniors that are here, thank you for coming down to City Hall. How many of you have been here the first time? Everyone's been here the first time. First timers.
As Tom Laban would say, you gotta go up to the tower and look around at the whole city.
That's right.
A day like today, it is clear out there. So we want, we'll help you get upstairs. We all should see that together.
Exactly. Well, thanks to our seniors for being here. Bill, thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
It's indeed a pleasure, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. Look, the clock doesn't stop. And my first lines for myself and Della, who's one of my great supports upstairs, we thought the golden years were golden. I bet every senior here has said the same thing. They're supposed to be golden. Not time for con people to take advantage of us because we are vulnerable. Correct. So, you know, it's just an amazing day. Now, I want to introduce an incredible guy right next to me on my right. Many of you know him. And he's up here for a lot of reasons. One of the primary reasons is that his concern for seniors is as great and as strong as mine. And I've watched you and your leadership in your district, but the combination of your district and my district together are the districts on the West Side that work closely together. And Angelo, give me the, that, and I'm gonna want to bring up the head of the group, and I want you to help me in the presentation of her. What's her name?
Adrian.
Adrian, come here, Adrian. All right, right here, Adrian.
Right in the microphone, Adrian.
And Adrian, before you speak, I'd like those eggs.
Hey.
Now, folks, if you got the backyard and you got the energy, get some chicken. Here, good for you. I have hens, and you know, that helps me connect. That helps me feel related. And then I feed them organic scraps from Whole Foods.
Here are the eggs.
And so, what I'm gonna do symbolically is to let every senior know, if you get good food, you're gonna live longer. Here is a turkey egg. I used to get them just for Herbie up there, he loves turkeys. I got bourbon turkeys. So you get a turkey egg.
Thank you.
You get the green egg and the other eggs.
Thank you so much.
But this is symbolically to all of the seniors, look at that great smile on you. I love it. So let me present it to you, to him to present to you.
Thank you so much.
And tell us who she is before you give it to her.
Well, this is Adrian Omansky, and she also is here with her group of actors as well. And she's a resident of my district, and they do terrific work. So it's my honor to present Bill's eggs to you as well as, as well as this certificate.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You're the best. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Right here. Go for it.
I'd like to introduce my colleagues. And my administrator first is Lynn Madden from Venice Service Area. And I thank the City Council for allowing me to have my job in support of adult education. Lynn Madden. She's right here. Arlene Tarlunki, she is our advisor for programs for older adults. She's right here from LAUSD. We have a very small older adult program now. We are down to 25 teachers, so we're doing the best we can to service the older adult population. Let me say a few words about our program. May is Older Americans Month. Every day, older adults in our city have become victims of fraud. Our Stop Senior Scam program has educated older adults on current scams and how to prevent them. We have also heard the voices of seniors who have been scammed and have not reported them because of embarrassment and lack of information. We provide the information so they could report the scams and that they could talk about them. They could talk to their children, they could talk to their grandchildren, they could talk to their spouses, they could talk to their friends. Many in our group have been victims themselves. Our skits have been written based on their own experiences, like that of 93-year-old Theta Bowen, who is right here.
93.
All right. Come on up. Give her the eggs.
And Theta is a prominent member of our group, and she was a victim of one of the scams two years ago. So our scams are written based on what we see in the community and the scams we have encountered. I also want to say that we have talked to seniors in the city who have been saving money for their children's braces, who have maybe lost their whole life savings, whether it be small or large. For a senior losing any financial amount is devastating, but more than that is the dignity that they have lost. We thank you, President Herb Wesson, who also is in our area at the Claude Pepper Senior Center. We have some of the seniors here today. I thank you, of course, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl and your whole staff. I also want to thank my City Councilman, Paul Corretz, and a wonderful deputy that has... So now it is my great pleasure to introduce David Nahai. David Nahai is the President of Nahai Consulting Services and a partner at Lewis-Brisbo Law Firm. He's a leading expert in water, energy, and real estate matters. And David previously served as the General Manager and Commission President at the LA Department of Water and Power. He was also Governor's Appointee to the Regional Water Quality Control Board and a Senior Advisor to the Clinton Climate Initiative. And as we said earlier, there are two types of people in the world, Neil Diamond fans, like Scott, and David Nahai, who is not a Neil Diamond fan. So, and you hold that against him, too. But it's my pleasure to welcome David Nahai.
And I'd like to say that Wendy Mitchell is not only...
...able to speak out and stop senior fraud. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. President, we would like to have a vote, or if any colleagues wants to speak?
Mr. Buscaino.
Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing forth this important issue on finding any and every way to stop senior scam across the city and across our region. Just yesterday, Bill, I presented my 92-year-old grandmother with her fresh half dozen eggs.
Yeah.
And it was then that I, in hearing this presentation, that I think about my 92-year-old grandmother and trying to find any way to prevent fraud in our senior community. And in return, Bill, as you know, she provided you some home-baked Italian cookies.
I know, I have them on my desk.
And as a police officer for many years, to see crime reports affecting our senior community really broke my heart. And we made every effort down at the harbor to educate the senior community and find every way to prevent another senior victim in the harbor area. So I want to thank you all for being here. God bless you. Thank you so much for raising awareness. You hear the stories of these fraudulent DWP employees trying to come into a house or somebody who wants to sell a product in the senior citizen, targeting senior community. Next thing you know, they walk in and take a number of items in the home. So thank you for your commitment, your compassion to serve the senior community, and we thank you and love you for it. Thank you.
Okay, Bill, let me, let me explain to you and the crowd what's gonna happen. I'm gonna ask your folks to take their seats, and I have three public comment cards, and then we will vote. So again, welcome, have a seat, and we'll get to this in a few minutes.
Next, Mr. President.
So I want Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, and Juan Akala to come forward.
This is an item very near to me. I'm a senior, homeless senior citizen. Hooray! You know why? I got scammed out of my house by the way you do business. You levy a lot of bills on people so they can go homeless. We are in a homeless-making society. And if we remove the monetary value out of basic housing, we will not have scams because it's not worth any money. It's all about the money, and City Hall is all about the money. We do not need parking meters, we do not need a lot of things, we don't even need City Hall. But if you want to be the controller, controlling agency, you gotta control yourselves first because you are the ones that pull more scams on people than anybody. My friend David Raphael in North Hollywood was sent a tax bill that didn't even exist, and you were gonna sell his house at auction. You do that to senior citizens all the time. You are the worst scammers in our society. You are City Hall, and you will rip anybody off because you need money to run a Nazi-run society. We don't need all those parking attendants. How much do we pay them? Probably more than we collect in parking tickets. Stupid.
Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Sorry that this was an excellent presentation by the seniors stopping scams. And sorry that Mr. Garcetti wasn't here. We need more presentations like this presentation, and I think we should have this presentation every year. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks. And I don't have a card. Arnold.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Part of the scam that you may encounter is intake of information. And so, speaking of intake of information, in this short presentation, you heard one of the speakers mention that Nate Holden made a request of her 15 years ago. And I believe, Mr. Wesson, you were on her staff of Nate Holden. And then Councilman Buscaino mentioned the reports he got as a field officer of the police. So why, ask yourself this question, why 15 years to recognize seniors being scammed in City Council? Maybe they couldn't fit it on their presentation schedule. But as the first speaker said, City Council and elected officials, and you are, as seniors, been through many votes, you should know by now, or you hopefully will understand by now, that there's some of the biggest scammers floating. We promise you this, we promise you that, and then when it's time to deliver, it's not our fault. We have a problem with personnel. The woman mentioned there's down to 15 or 20 staff members. Why is that? Because fundings are short. Why is that? Because we have a structural deficit you have to pay. And a structural deficit refers to a scam with your deeds. You may be asked to foreclose on your house, sign some papers, re-mortgage your house. That's what happens here. They borrow to...
Mr. President, it does not appear to be talking about this item.
They borrow to prosperity. And as you're an elder citizen, you should know...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Sacks, your time has expired. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to take a moment and introduce one of our eighth district schools that are here.
Go right ahead.
Weems Elementary stand up. And they're here as representing their school as a student council for the third, fourth, and fifth grades. They're accompanied by Mr. Gindrit and Ms. Espaza as student council advisors. Want to just welcome them here. We asked them to come up so they can see themselves on TV later on.
Young people, look up on the screen, and you'll see yourselves.
They say they're all avid Time Warner cable watchers, so wave at the TV screens, right up there.
Wave at the screen. Everybody wave.
Thank you very much for being here.
Anyway, thank you for being here. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Billy, that passes. And to Arlene out there, once we begin discussions on an item, we don't take cards as they're being discussed. You have to submit your card prior. Okay, now, Mr. Laban, are you ready? Not only are you ready, you're willing and able.
Good morning, everybody. This is a very special day because one of the greatest architects of all time is being honored. He was born in England and migrated in the last century before this one to Los Angeles, and he has designed over 200 buildings, including Los Angeles City Hall, including the Grand Cathedral at 39th and Figaro, the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum, including Union Station, the gateway to Los Angeles, and also Bullock's Wilshire, that very fine building now that is Southwestern Law. This is John Parkinson Day in the City of Los Angeles, and I welcome the John Parkinson family. All right, good job. Each of you have received for your offices a book just published by Angel City Press by Stephen G., The Iconic Vision of John Parkinson. And did you know that every building at Fifth and Spring was designed by John Parkinson? This man had impact, real impact. And he's being honored today because several years ago, seven to be in fact, the former Council General, the Council General Emeritus, if I might add, Robert Pierce said we should get together along with Nigel Lithgow, Nigel from You Dance at Night or whatever that show is, Dance With Me. What is it?
So You Think You Can Dance.
So You Think You Can Dance. I can't dance.
Laban, you don't have to demonstrate.
I don't, I wanted to. But I want to call Robert in for a few remarks to talk about Brit Week, which you all know about, and this very special program.
Come forward, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the council, I don't think I need to say too much about what Brit Week is because this council has been good enough to recognize Brit Week in the past. Very briefly, it was founded by my wife Sharon and myself, together with Nigel Lithgow, to celebrate and promote and draw awareness to the creative British links with Los Angeles. Today, we have taken great pleasure in presenting every member of the council with this book about John Parkinson, who was, like me, a British immigrant to this city. We see the significance of John Parkinson Day and the significance of this book as two things. One, it celebrates the work of this great man, about whom no book has been written before, as far as I'm aware. It's well overdue. The other thing, if I may say so, as a passionate immigrant myself to the City of Angels, it draws attention in a major way to the importance of architecture in Los Angeles. This is a great city of architecture, in my humble view. I don't believe that enough is known about the strength of the architectural gems and the architectural contributions of Los Angeles. And I hope that this book, which I hope the visitors to all your offices and to City Hall will read, and I hope that everybody in the City of Los Angeles buys this book, this gives us something to be very proud of about the architectural heritage in Los Angeles. And I take great pleasure in now introducing the author of that book, Mr. Stephen G.
I'd like to thank Bob and Sharon at Brit Week for supporting this project from the beginning. I'd like to thank Tom Laban for supporting this project, Camilla, Lisa, and Jade for all the hard work they've done to draw attention to John Parkinson's legacy. Now, since we're in City Hall designed by John Parkinson, I'd like to correct an enormous historical oversight. John Parkinson is not just the greatest British architect in Los Angeles history, he's the greatest public architect in Los Angeles history. Considering his lifetime, he designed Bullock's Wilshire, an Art Deco cathedral of commerce. Union Station, the last great train station built anywhere in the world. The Coliseum, the only venue anywhere in the world to have staged the opening ceremonies for two Olympic Games, and this amazing structured City Hall. It's a fantastic day for Los Angeles to celebrate. It's a fantastic day to be a Parkinson family member. I'd like to acknowledge Taya Ziliani, Kathy Harris Gordezek, Melanie Parkinson Larson, Kimberly DeCambrer, and Pamela Parkinson Kellogg. Kimberly DeCambrera, and Pamela Parkinson Kellogg, who's going to speak on behalf of the family.
On behalf of the Parkinson family, I would like to thank the City Council, and especially Councilman Tom Labonge, for the passage of this resolution honoring John Parkinson. We deeply appreciate the Councilman Labonge's enthusiasm and support. John Parkinson and his son Donald designed over 400 buildings, 200 in Greater Los Angeles. There are still 50 of them in downtown Los Angeles. Fifteen Parkinson buildings line Spring Street alone. At the intersection of Spring and Fifth Streets, all four corners are occupied by Parkinson buildings. These buildings are still here because they are practical and astonishingly beautiful. My favorites are Bullock's Wilshire, Union Station, the Title Insurance and Trust Building, and the building where we find ourselves today, L.A. City Hall. John Parkinson's work was integral to early Los Angeles history. His majestic buildings allowed the city to develop into the commercial, social, and cultural powerhouse that it is today. We are so fortunate that these buildings survive and grace our streets. In consideration of John Parkinson's contributions to Los Angeles history and Los Angeles architecture, we urge the City Council to consider renaming a street in his honor. And lastly, I would like to thank Stephen G. for writing his book, "Iconic Vision," which tells the story of early Los Angeles, and John Parkinson's work, and passion for this great city.
Pamela, thank you. All Parkinson's raise your hand. A great family. Look at this, Mr. President, all these family members for the Parkinson family. Pamela, come back up here. John Sable, City Librarian, report. Stephen G., you're going to give him the first book for the public library. Stephen, Stephen, as the author, I want you to present it to John Sable, the City Librarian.
John, it's a huge honor to give you this book. I hope you enjoy it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. But it's for the people in the library, John. Get a registration on that, and we'll get more. We all should get more for all the branches, which we'll do. Mr. President, thank you so much. And to the family, thank you for your grandfather, your great-grandfather. Without the fact that an immigrant came, as so many immigrants do to Los Angeles, without the fact they had to visit, there is no City Hall in the world that is grander than the Los Angeles City Hall. There's no train station in the world that's grander than Union Station. There is no Bullock's Wilshire in the world, because there's only one Wilshire Boulevard. And there's no Coliseum in the world better than the Memorial Coliseum. Mr. President, I rest my case. I ask for an eye vote on John Parkinson Day in the city of Los Angeles. Good job. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Mr. Labonge clears the center aisle, if I could get our city clerk to come forward.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Holly Walcott. I'm the executive officer for the office of the city clerk. Today, we want to make a brief announcement and remind everybody that this Monday, May 6th, is the last day for residents to register to vote for the May 21st election. We know, each one of you knows how important your voice is, and we want to urge the residents of Los Angeles to make their vote heard and to register to vote before Monday and to vote on May 21st. And to help get that message out to everyone, we've brought our language specialists here today to also present the same information in each one of the languages that we translate our materials.
And as your last speaker, June Lagmate, it's my honor to serve as your city clerk. I'd like to thank Sandra Mendoza for coordinating this event from our election division. I thank you, member of the City Council, for your support, and we look for you to ask your community outreach to the voters in your community, urge them to vote on May 21st.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Vote L.A.
Mr. Kokorian.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. President. All of my colleagues know that I am sometimes an embarrassingly proud Trojan and boast about my university often. But there are few things about the University of Southern California that I am prouder of than the Joint Educational Project. USC's JEP Joint Educational Project was founded in 1972 with the mission of providing students with practical application of the academic skills and theories learned in the classroom, fostering a stronger partnership between the university and the surrounding community, and recognizing the power of all people to create change in our society. Since its inception in 1972, JEP has placed more than 60,000 USC students in community assignments, helping young people and others in the surrounding neighborhood, young people who might be at risk of going in the wrong direction, young people who are attending public schools with often inadequate resources. And this infusion of university student energy and skills and enthusiasm has meant a magnificent difference to the surrounding community and so many young people. Forty years after its founding, and we're celebrating JEP's 40th anniversary this year, 40 years after its founding, JEP is recognized as one of the oldest, largest, and finest university service learning programs in the entire nation, and it has, in many ways, been the model that other universities have patterned their service learning programs after. I was myself an alum of the JEP program, as was Ms. Perry. And for both of us, this was a life-altering experience at a very young age. It really impacts the involved students as well as those who we were serving. And I just want to share one example of that. There was a JEP mentor in 1989 or 1990, she graduated in the class of 1991, and she had devoted her time, like many of us did, mentoring a young student at a local elementary school. And many years later, she was having trouble remembering any details about that student, when, fast forward through the magic of social media, she was contacted through Facebook by this student, who had been trying to track her down for years. And at the time that she was mentoring him, she provided him with a lot of inspiration. She even went on a trip to Europe and brought back a piece of the Berlin Wall, which she gave to him, and promised him that if he continued to do well in school and stay out of trouble, she would take him to Disneyland, which she did. She made good on her promise. So after all these years, this former student contacted her with a message that read as follows: "I've been trying to find you forever. I could only remember your first name, and my best friend told me to try Facebook. I just wanted to thank you for coming into my life and showing me something different. You just don't know how you could change someone's life for the better. I live in Dallas, Texas now. I have three children. I am a music promoter. I still have that piece of the Berlin Wall you brought back, and guess what? I take my kids to Disney World every spring. Thank you so much for changing my life." Now, this was a young person who added that almost everyone that he knew was either incarcerated, had gone through the system, had, you know, ended up dead through gang violence or otherwise. Only three of his friends from school had made it out, as he put it. And one of them was this young man who was helped by a JEP student. So it's very clear that while this is a student learning program that helps shape the lives of USC students, if you can imagine multiplying that story by 60,000, you can imagine the impact that the USC JEP program has had on all of Los Angeles and on students who have gone on to move throughout our country. You may not see the impact that you have on a person right away, as this story shows, but sometimes you just never know, when you cast seeds, which ones are going to sprout and how. And JEP has certainly done that time and time again for 40 years. The tenacity, creativity, and dedication of the volunteers and staff of the JEP has ensured its continuing success over these last 40 years and made the program the national and international model of such programs. I know that they're going to continue on and have a dramatic impact on many, many more students and many, many more young people for many years to come. So I want to congratulate JEP and its volunteers and staff on the extraordinary success of this program. And I'd like to welcome and invite to the microphone the program director of JEP, Tammy Anderson.
Thank you so much. Good morning, council members. And on behalf of the staff, alumni, and friends of JEP, I'd like to thank you for this most prestigious honor. It is always wonderful to be recognized for your efforts, but this is even more meaningful, because it was initiated by one of our own, Councilmember Paul Kokorian, who along with Councilmember Jan Perry, participated in our program while undergraduates at the University of Southern California. In the age-conscious society that we live in, turning 40 seems to conjure up notions of being old, tired, or worn out. At JEP, 40 symbolizes just the opposite. We are energized as we look back over these many years and think about Barbara Seaver-Gardner, our visionary founder, who despite foundations telling her that JEP would never last, told us, "JEP will be fine, just outlive those naysayers." Or Dick Cohn, our leader in the service learning field, who followed Barbara as director and took JEP from being seen as a nice little charity program to one that is integrated into the mission of the university by placing students from academic courses in community service assignments as a way of extending their learning. Turning 40 makes us reflect on some of our accomplishments. For example, long before mentoring was a political agenda of presidents and governors, JEP students were working one-on-one with neighborhoods' children in non-academic and semi-academic settings. Our PALS program began in 1974, and we received our first mentoring grant in 1989. Two years before the LAPD began their DARE program, JEP launched its Choices Drug Education Program, where teams of USC students would conduct mini-courses in mental, physical, and social effects of drug usage. In 1991, JEP converted an adult literacy program designed by undergraduate Osmo Sharah into a program to assist struggling young readers by placing specially-trained students as literacy tutors. In 1997 and 1999, President Clinton established his America Reads and America Counts initiatives with the dual objectives of providing meaningful work opportunities for university students by having them work in urban schools tutoring children in reading and math to help address the educational crisis in our country. JEP administers USC's version of the president's initiatives, called the USC Readers Plus Program. We are proud of the fact that JEP made USC the first university in the country to have an America Reads, America Counts program up and running. We doubt if Bill got this idea from us, but we could have told him of the logic of this approach many years earlier. In 2000, we were recognized as one of the oldest, largest, and best-organized service learning programs in the country by Time Magazine and Princeton Review. And in 2006, we were noted as one of the top 25 service learning programs by U.S. News and World Report. Turning 40 brings to mind past staff members, both students and professionals, whose tenacity, creativity, and absolute dedication to our program has made it an international model program, drawing in visitors from around the globe to see us in action and gain ideas for their own programs. It leads us to reminisce about our rich collaborations with community partners, some for all of our 40 years, which have resulted in exciting educational, oftentimes transformational experiences for SC students, who not only learned something new related to their classes, but found out more about their beliefs, talents, or chosen career path. Yes, we are 40 years old, and while our offices at the JEP House did recently get a major facelift, we are still the program where 2,000 USC students circulate each year to learn through a combination of community service, academic inquiry, and discovery. We are still the place where it is typical to see groups of students engaged in spirited discussions about inequality in education or in healthcare, race, class, gender, and poverty based on their experiences in the community. We are still seen as a loyal USC partner by over 50 community sites, and as the best job on earth by JEP staff. As young as we look, there are a couple of us that have worked at JEP for over 30 years. As young as we look, there are a couple of us that have worked at JEP for over 30 years. I sincerely want to recognize deans of the Doran's College of Letters, Arts, and Sciences, past and present, who have given JEP its academic home, USC and Doran's faculty, engaged students, our community partners, and every donor who trusted us to be good stewards with their funds. JEP is truly a testament to all that is possible when town and gown work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I want to recognize all the people behind me here. Our staff members, I have Dean Linda Lopez of the Doran's College of Letters, Arts, and Sciences. I just gave you a raise. You're an associate dean, sorry. And JEP staff members, I want to bring Maria Calderon, who was actually with Barbara, she was one of her assistants when Barbara Gardner first founded JEP 40 years ago. She was 12 when she started. She's right. Dina Lou, where's Dina? Dina is one of our donors. She's also an alum, who she and her husband Mitchell participated in our program, and they've been wonderful friends of JEP for many years now. And the whole JEP clan, everybody. Okay, thank you so much.
Right. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Krikorian.
On behalf of the people of the city of Los Angeles, I want to congratulate and recognize the joint educational project for all you've contributed to this city for the last 40 years.
Thank you so much.
Big hand, right on. Thank you again, the University of Southern California. Now I call on Mr. Richard Alarcon of the 7th District. Yes. And as they take the picture, because the back room is filled, Mr. Alarcon's going to take the podium in a moment, which is good, good angle, Betsy. Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian. Now I would like to recognize the councilman of the 7th District and appreciate everybody's involvement today, Mr. Alarcon.
Mr. President, it gives me great pleasure today to recognize a very young talent in our community and who is adding beauty to the streets of the northeast San Fernando Valley. And more importantly, he is doing it at his own expense and volunteering this service to the city. I'm speaking of Levi Ponse, who is an artist from the northeast San Fernando Valley. He established a personal goal to paint one mural for each month on Van Nuys Boulevard in the northeast San Fernando Valley, and he's done it. I have packets of these murals, and they are truly phenomenal pieces of art and creative as well. But more than anything else, they add color and beauty to the northeast San Fernando Valley, particularly the Pacoima. I met him when he volunteered to paint a picture of Reggie Smith, Mr. Labonge. And you and I met Reggie Smith when they celebrated out here in the South Lawn, and we were just deputies for the mayor and the president of the council. So we wanted to give him due recognition, and more importantly, we want to make a statement about murals and say how important murals are to Los Angeles. They're part of our fabric, they add to our color, they add to who we are as a city. And we want to thank him for his contributions to the city. Interestingly, his father taught him his trade, and you are probably familiar with his art. If you are familiar with the Beatles mural, that is Levi Ponse's father. And he also painted the James Olmos and Jaime Escalante mural at MacArthur Park. So he comes from good stock, and his father Hector Ponse, who painted those two murals, has trained his son well. How does he do this? You know, it's kind of hard to imagine, but frankly, he has a real job. Muralists are difficult to define when it comes to careers, but he is a commercial artist and has a full-time job. He received his bachelor's degree in art concentrating in animation from Cal State University, Northridge. Go Matadors. If they only knew what Matador meant. We, as I said, we met at the Little League, at the Pacoima Little League opening, and he's painted a beautiful mural. In fact, I'm going through the process of funding a restoration of that mural because unfortunately it got a little tagging on it. But we want to recognize the next generation of muralists who are coming, who are living, working, and believing in beautifying Los Angeles, and by their actions are doing just that. Today, I'm very proud to recognize somebody from the northeast San Fernando Valley, Levi Ponse, who has done tremendous artwork already to date. So thank you so much for the work that you've done. We present this certificate to you in recognition of not only what you've done, but in our hopes and beliefs that your future is going to be just as productive, and you're going to be giving these gifts to the Los Angeles community as your father did for many, many years to come. Levi Ponse.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Mr. Alarcon and the council, and of course, MCLA Isabel, for all their continued support. I'd like to thank you as well for the recognition of murals and public art in Los Angeles and the valley, the San Fernando Valley specifically. And I'd like to thank you ahead of time for the new mural ordinance that will allow artists like myself, artists like Isidro Candelario, and the rest of us in Los Angeles to create public works of art legally, so that we can once again reclaim Los Angeles as the mural capital of the world. I think it's very important that we see murals not just for their ending result as a pretty picture on the wall, but for what they do behind the scenes, which is act as a pivot point for communities to come together, as a pivot point for communities to create change in their neighborhoods. And I think that's what's really important, and that's what we need to focus on, what murals do for a community behind the scenes and how they tie the community together. So thank you, Mr. Alarcon, and thank you for the council, and you'll be seeing a lot more of me, I promise.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the honor of your father's work, Mr. Alarcon. I love the Beatles on Santa Monica Boulevard and Wilton Place.
That's his dad.
Harvey Hotel.
Yeah, it gives me particular pleasure because my first job with the city was to coordinate the Mayor Bradley's mural program. To see that it still lives on today with his vision makes me very proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to reconsider an item there. Item number 11. Could we reconsider number 11? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Very good. And on reconsideration, members, I want to vote to send it back to committee. Any objection? So over the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Back to committee.
That item will be referred back to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to take public comment. Jim Van Dusen, general public comment. Arnold Sacks.
I just appeared.
Mr. Walsh.
My name's Jim. My name's Jim Van Dusen. I'm a 43-year resident of Hollywood, a member of the Board of the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council and co-chair of the Plum Committee. This Neighborhood Council represents all stakeholders from the Hollywood sign to Hollywood Boulevard, which includes the Millennium Project. While we certainly cannot stay for certain that every stakeholder is opposed to excessively dense development, I can say that we're hearing almost uniformly from all corners that a significant concern about the unbridled and uncontrolled development represented by the Millennium Project. A central concern is that this is a project without a plan. It has outside parameters but no detail. We have asked Millennium representatives for years to describe what they want to build. They refuse to do so. They also have not told the planning department what they intend to build. This places everyone in a position of not being able to work with the developers to come up with a project that satisfies all stakeholders. Hunk is on record with opposing any relaxation of the zoning regulations to allow a 6:1 floor area ratio. The phase elegant density has been utilized to describe a vision for all areas next to subway stations. However, allowing a 6:1 FAR for Hollywood and Vine is a vote for unsustainable density that will far outstrip the ability of the area and infrastructure to absorb. Several council members have stated that the project is too large for the area and are suggesting building height limits of 22 to 30 stories. Critical to the achievement of elegant density would be to also keep the existing 4.5:1 floor area ratio, which would be consistent with the spirit and goals of the Hollywood Community Plan. Caltrans stated that traffic studies produced by the Millennium Company are flawed and do not address the regional impact of large-scale development. This needs a fair and realistic plan due to the fact that it will impact the entire LA basin as Hollywood is a traffic choke point. It is also a key area for tourists attracted to the Hollywood sign, which brings substantial revenues to the city. The Millennium Project, by obscuring viewing of the signing, could adversely affect city revenue in excess of any net revenue the project might bring. Virtually all affected Neighborhood Councils and Neighborhood groups in the Millennium Project area are opposed to the excessive development of this project. You are urged to vote to support elegant density and a 4.5:1 FAR. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Yesterday during a budget committee hearings, Councilman Labonge asked me not to wear the shirt that I normally wear to council chambers. It's being cleaned. And I told him today I would give him an explanation as to why I wear the shirt. So LA being the capital of filming supposedly, you all know about the film The Perfect Storm. There was a convergence of events with catastrophic consequences. So let's give you another, a sequel to that. Suppose the mayor has to tell the truth, and he falls into a catatonic state and he can't communicate. And then the city council president has to come up with an idea, falls into a coma, excuse me, a good idea, falls into a coma, can't communicate. That would leave Councilman Reyes as the leader of the city. That's why I wear the shirt. The city, the county, and metro are considering their yearly budgets, yet the facts from the 2009 budget state that revenue was $620 million. But the county and the city and the mayor and metro said, "You vote for Measure R, it'll raise $1.3 billion." That's why I wear the shirt. Everybody familiar with Penn State? Joe Paterno, his career was, his legacy was ruined, not for what he did, but for what he did to. Nobody questions the facts. That's why I wear the shirt. Another movie, Invasion of the Body Snatchers. Pod people replaced the population. I'm not ready for a pod. That's why I wear the shirt. I'll give you more reasons next week, but that's why I wear the shirt, Councilman. I hope you understand.
Mr. Walsh. Followed by Mr. Jones.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go right there and then click on to JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com. We have 19 more days, only 19 more days. They sent out a week ago all of the mail-in ballots. In the last election, 2/3 sat there in your own home, and they weren't even mailed out. We must eliminate Garcetti's political career. We have to do it. Mr. Garcetti will put in, I'm talking to every progressive in this city, he has already promised Kevin James a deputy mayor. This man is a racist, a vile racist. Garcetti goes out to the right-wing racist portions of the valley, arm-in-arm with Kevin James, and they talk racism. Then the same man, Garcetti, goes with Herb Wesson into the black community, and he talks about he's a brother. That's what's happening in this city. Do not trust Eric Garcetti. Cesar Chavez, the spirit of Cesar Chavez, the farmworkers are behind Wendy Grule. Or are you going to be behind? And I just don't think because you have homosexual sex, that makes you politically correct. And Kevin James, look at him, look, he will be a deputy mayor, and your three black people up here have sold themselves to Garcetti for jobs. Please, vote now. Register. You must prevent Eric Garcetti from, he's a Trojan horse. He's a right-wing Trojan horse. Ask him to kick Kevin James out of his, he gets down on his knees, James, and they both do a 69 on one another. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Come on now, Dion. All right, Mr. Jones. No, come on now, you're disrupting the entire meeting.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Jones. First, I'd like to apologize for the corporal over here. I was getting a little snappy with him. He knows why. There is a commanding brigadier general sitting for the Los Angeles Police Department, Mr. Herb Wesson. Can I get your attention, Mr. Mayor Protem? Is this where I sign up for the Terrorism Liaison Officer Course? Yes or no? I'd like to pause my time. Can I get an answer for that, Mr. Wesson? It's the same thing Kirbels did in Nazi, you know, spread a little... Well, hell, if I can sign up, I can come in here and call you terrorists. You all got to realize about my political correctness. I don't have any. You're going to find that out later. Look, the subprime mortgage, here's the difference between a gimmick and a scam, or a Ponzi scheme and a gimmick. One's legal, one's not. The Ponzi scheme was illegal. The subprime mortgage was legal. And this is the only reason why. Because the Ponzi scheme couldn't get past the U.S. Senate Ethics Committee, and the subprime mortgage law did. Herb Wesson, Mayor Protem for the City of Los Angeles. All these graduating students, you graduated, were you able to ask for a raise when you got hired? There isn't an employee in this country who can't get fired tomorrow by asking for a quality-of-life raise. That was a Democrat. That was my president. He said, "I'm concerned." That was President Bill Clinton. I also know about the rules and regulations about reaction shots. It doesn't mean I can't describe them or imitate them, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go back to the items. We'll conclude general public comment a little later. Mr. Krikorian, it's my understanding that the public comment has been satisfied on item two.
With your indulgence, Mr. President, I think there's only two or three cards, and folks have come to speak about this. If you would, I would like to give them the opportunity to...
Okay, what about if I give them a minute each? Come on up, guy.
Thank you.
That look in your face, Krikorian. Okay, so let me get, I think it's Joshua. Come forward, I can't pronounce the... And I think I have Juliette Landgrave and a Daniel Healy or Mealy, and a Dr... Doctor, I'm going to have you come up and identify yourself. Okay, yes, go on, sir. Identify yourself and go forward.
Good morning. My name is Joshua.
No, we'll give them two minutes.
Say what? Is it on?
Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Joshua Stepkoff. Thank you for having me out this morning. I'm a 20-year-old college student attending Cal State Northridge, and I've been advocating for safer gun laws for about 13 years now. On the morning of August 10, 1999, at the North Valley Jewish Community Center, I was shot twice by a neo-Nazi who was armed to the teeth with a Uzi-like submachine gun that held more than 70 rounds, which he fired in less than a minute, two of which hit me in my left leg and my left hip. And I can confidently say that if he was unable to have a magazine of that size, I would have had a chance to get away without being shot, which is a tragedy that no young six-year-old should have to go through. And so I urge you to pass Councilman Krikorian's bill to limit the size of magazines to, I believe, 10 rounds or less. Thank you.
My name is Juliette Landgrave, and I'm the Associate Director of Women Against Gun Violence. We applaud the Los Angeles City Council efforts to make our communities safer, and we support Councilman Paul Krikorian's motion to ban possession of high-capacity magazines in the city of Los Angeles. in the city of Los Angeles. Christina Green was nine years old in Arizona, was killed with a 13-bullet of a high-capacity magazine. Adam Lanza had a choice of weapons and ammunition, and he decided to take a high-capacity magazine to Sandy Hook. We admire and support your courage to challenge the nation's status quo of caving to gun lobby. We again support and encourage your support in this important motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Farid Akhmer. I'm an epidemiologist and health professional, and I'm here in the strong support of the banning or prohibiting the large-capacity magazine ammunition, and for a good reason, because we are here, and our professional, profession is to help and support and care for people, and we believe strongly the laws for people to make them safer and live better life. And so I'm very strongly, you know, for this motion to pass. We have more questions. You can see our website, I H E R C dot org, and I'm a founder and president of the International Health and Epidemiology Research Center Anti-Violence Campaign for Peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Daniel Healy. I'm here on behalf of the Violence Prevention Coalition Greater Los Angeles, we're a coalition of about 90 organizations working to reduce violence in the greater Los Angeles area. I want to thank Councilmember Krikorian for putting forth this motion. We're here in support of the proposed ban on possession of high-capacity ammunition magazines. California law currently does not ban possession. This gap is a threat to public safety. High-capacity ammunition magazines make firearms more lethal. More shots are fired, more people are hit, and there's more wounds per victim. They have been frequently used in mass shootings. And so I urge you to support this motion to ban possession of high-capacity ammunition magazines so Los Angeles can continue to be a model city. I have here a model law prepared by the Law Center to prevent gun violence, prohibiting the possession of large-capacity ammunition magazines for local governments in California. So I'd like to give this to somebody.
Sergeants, if you please get the document from Mr. Healy.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, members, and thank you, Mr. President, for your indulgence with regard to the public comment. As you heard from the speakers, I felt that it was important that those who were here had an opportunity to speak. And it was especially important, I think, that we heard from Josh Stepkoff, because in 1999, we all remember, when a gunman walked into the North Valley Jewish Community Center in Granada Hills and fired off 70 rounds at children whose parents had dropped them off into a safe place that day until that neo-Nazi walked through the door with, armed with firearms and Uzi, with a high-capacity magazine. And as a result of that incident, Josh was struck. And if you look at this picture, it might bring back some of those memories that we all share. In 1999, when these young people were led out of their community center by members of the Los Angeles Police Department and their teachers, and I couldn't help but notice that just a few months ago, we had a strikingly similar image with the young people of Newtown, Connecticut, being led out of their school after so many of their classmates had been gunned down by another gunman, bringing in another gun with another high-capacity magazine. In that shooting at Sandy Hook, Charlotte Bacon was six years old when she died. Daniel Barden was seven. Josephine Gay was looking forward to her eighth birthday. Now, we don't know whether those children were killed by the ninth bullet or the 15th bullet, but we do know that if that gunman hadn't had high-capacity magazines, there would have been a better, better option for some of those young people to escape. There would have been a better opportunity for law enforcement to respond. There would have been fewer dead children. And so it's simply time, colleagues, that this country start to act. This country start to have the courage to stand up to the extreme few who have blocked reasonable, sensible restrictions on these ultra-violent weapons and weapon, and magazines, these sorts of things that dramatically increase the lethality of a given weapon. And I'm so pleased that we're be, we're able today to begin to take the lead, where our federal government has failed, where even our state government has failed. The state government has acted in banning the importation of high-capacity magazines, the sale of high-capacity magazines, the transfer of high-capacity magazines, but they haven't addressed the continuing possession of high-capacity magazines. That's what this motion is intended to address, and I'm pleased to bring it before you and ask for your eye vote. I'm especially pleased to have been joined in this motion by my colleagues who have devoted their life to public safety and the reduction of gun violence. Law enforcement professionals like Joe Buscaino and Mitchell Englander, Chair of our Public Safety Committee, my colleague Paul Corretts, who I've stood with in fighting for gun, reasonable gun regulations and reduction of gun violence since before either of us were in public office. And so I'd like to ask for your eye vote so that we can move forward in finally trying to bring some sanity to this issue and try, trying to address this problem and leading our country to do likewise.
Okay, Mr. Englander. And we're going to have quorum issues, members.
Okay, well, we'll have quorum issues, but this is a critically important issue. If I could, just take a second, Mr. President, to speak on it. I want to thank our colleague Paul Krikorian for bringing this forward. I've, since signing the resolution, have gotten a lot of phone calls and emails, tweets, Facebook, letters from gun rights groups and advocates, and that they're concerned that this is an overstep, that we're taking away their liberties and their freedom, and I just couldn't disagree more. This is not taking their guns away at all. This is taking away high-capacity magazines. I want to applaud Josh for coming forward. That, he actually, I don't know if you were aware, Josh, but attended grade school with my children. And your courage to come forward, we truly appreciate that. This is not an issue of gun rights versus not having gun rights. It's an issue of an antiquated loophole that says you can't, you can possess it, but you can't manufacture it, you can't sell it, you can't distribute them, but you can own them. It just really doesn't make a lot of sense. And if you really, what it boils down to is the intent of high-capacity magazines and the destruction that they can cause and do cause, as we all know. And as Mr. Krikorian eloquently went through, just a short list of what we've seen here in our community and across the nation. With that, I've also had a lot of concern and phone calls from law enforcement and officers saying, "We need these to protect us." Law enforcement is exempt in this and should be exempt in this. And after we saw what happened in North Hollywood with the shootout, in fact, we were outgunned, and now allow other types of weaponry because of it. But with that, this is the right step forward, it's the right thing to do. The protections are absolutely in place for law enforcement, without question, and I applaud you coming forward with this and all your work that you've done, Mr. Krikorian, on behalf of public safety, as not only sitting on the committee, but your leadership in Sacramento and here locally, needs to be applauded. And I urge everybody's eye vote on this common sense policy. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just thank Mr. Krikorian for all his good work on this issue for many, many years. In particular, I think this is an important catch, because while the state has a ban on the sale of large-capacity clips, there's no ban on actual possession of them, and so people can buy them in other states and then possess them and do the same damage. So I think it's important that we close this loophole for all the reasons that have been discussed, and encourage my colleagues to support this measure.
Mr. Zain.
Mr. Krikorian, I support what you're doing, and I think it's the right thing to do. This is a magazine. This is from a 92F Beretta. This carries 15 rounds. You will still have the ability to have 10 rounds. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. They'll still have 10 rounds. If a person wants to protect themselves and their family, and they talk about taking guns away, 10 rounds. This is what LAPD carries. There's 15 rounds in this magazine. One, two, three, four, five, a total of 15 rounds. So we're not doing anything extreme. We're not doing anything to hurt people who want to carry a gun for protection, and they have a legal right to do that under the Second Amendment, but what we're doing is what's reasonable. And when you have a magazine that carries 15 rounds, it's going to give you additional firepower, and we've seen the tragedies that occur. So people, and I've received some of the emails from Second Amendment supporters, and I support the Second Amendment, as I know you support the Second Amendment, we're not talking about that. We're talking about limited amounts of rounds that a person's able to fire when they get involved in a situation. And sadly, we've seen too many situations where people are attacking innocent people over and over and over. And when I joined the LAPD in 1968, we carried a six-shooter, six rounds. And because two officers were killed, murdered, in Chinatown in a robbery, the department then went to a 9-millimeter. And now they went to a 40 and a 45, et cetera, because of the firepower on the streets from bad guys who kill innocent people. So I think what you're doing is very reasonable, but to counter those that say we're trying to take away people's guns, et cetera, that's far from the truth. And 10 rounds, to me, is more than sufficient if you want to protect yourself and your family. So I think it's a measure in the right direction, and if we ignore it, then we'll have more tragedies and more young men who come to counsel. And congratulations to you for surviving that nightmare that you have to live with for the rest of your life, the courage to come before us today. But the bottom line is, we need to do what's reasonable and what's prudent, and this measure is reasonable and prudent. So I congratulate you and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zain. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now, I want to call item 12. We have a card, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Within a couple of hours, the incident that just occurred here will be on the website. This is number 12, and this concerns Board of Library Commissioners. We have a lot of problems in the library with people living in the library. I don't mind people living in the library. I don't mind them bathing in the library. I don't mind them sleeping in the library. I'm very, very liberal. The only thing I would say to the Library Commissioner is, I don't even mind them watching television with an earpiece in the library. But the other day, at the, at the city library, there were people playing cards at the table. I draw a line at that. I'm not that liberal. And of course, we don't see too many liberals at the, at the library, not at the Hollywood library. And we're very happy, I understand, although we have vetted Mr. Nathanson, I'm sure that he hasn't any kiddie porn in his possession, as a previous appointee of the mayor had. And I believe he's now in the Who's Gau, the gentleman with the, with the pornography, the kiddie porn, I should say. The libraries are very, I would like to thank Mr. Labange and others for re-extending the library hours. It's always a pleasure at the Hollywood Library, and apparently I'm not going to be screamed and catcalled. There was a disruption when I spoke last time, and it came from up there. Watch the video.
Let's stay on the item.
Watch the video. HollywoodHighlands.org, go there right now.
Okay, Anwana Kala, he's not here, so we go to Mr. Alakon.
Councilmembers, we waived this matter out of committee to give you the opportunity to ask questions directly to Mr. Nathanson, but I did have the opportunity to speak to Mr. Nathanson. In fact, we ended up talking for quite, quite a long time. Fascinating individual who brings a lot of expertise and talent to this position, comes out of the music industry primarily, but has done some fascinating things with the community in terms of using, for example, MTV to promote community service. And so I think he brings a wealth of information, a wealth of ability to the library system, and I also think he is in line with our own general manager in terms of their activist way of approaching problems. And I have the highest regard for our librarian and believe that, that he's actually going to have a positive impact on the literacy rate. And I should also mention that Mr. Nathanson is very adept in the high-tech world, and I think that's where our library system has to focus its attention, to bring everything in new technology to the library system, and most importantly, to gain access to minority communities and underserved communities. And by the way, Mr. Nathanson's business success actually exemplifies exactly that, investing in, in new communities that have been underserved. And so I commend him for that. So at this time, maybe, Mr. Nathanson, you can explain why you want to do this and some of the things that you believe you can.
Richard, why don't we go to Mr. Rosendahl, then I'll go to Mr. Nathanson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand not only to support him, but enthusiastically. His father and I go back over 30 years. I've watched you grow up, and I've watched you excel in everything you've gotten involved in, and it really, it'll be great for the city to have you on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nathanson.
Thank you.
And I have no other speakers on the queue, just to let you know, so that means so far you're doing good.
Thank you.
So you watch what you say, you should be all right.
Well, thank you for your consideration. I'm hopeful that with my media and business background, that I can be a valuable resource for the city librarian, John Zabo. As a commissioner, I hope to help our libraries become vibrant centers for the community that provide crucial services throughout all of Los Angeles, from children's education to reading and financial literacy, to expanding the citizenship initiative, to internet access, ebook deliveries, and much more. I'm very impressed with John Zabo, and I look forward to supporting the future vision of our Los Angeles public libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations. It's my understanding, Madam Clerk, item three was held by concerns of Mr. Corretts. So his comfort level has been elevated, and he said we can move on this item. So if we put item three before us, let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number four, there were some cards. I think we're just prepared to vote on number four. That'd be fine. I'd ask for your eye vote. And on number 17, I'd like to move to receive and file that item, please.
Okay, can we take up those two items real quick? We'll go four first. Let's open the roll. Yeah, but I think we already satisfied the public hearing. Did we, Madam Clerk, or am I wrong? Okay, so, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now can we go to 17? There are cards on 17.
And, Mr. President, the motion is to receive and file that item.
Okay, Anwana Kala, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks.
I'll go.
Please come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. What's going on here? First, Mr. Joseph was offered the job. Today, in the LA Times, it said, and yesterday, in the LA Times, it said that Ray Joseph had rejected the job, the selection of Ray Joseph as general manager. Go right now. Google it. So first, he said he wanted the job, then he said he didn't want the job, then the mayor twisted his arm, now he's back here, he wants the job. The job doesn't seem to be very important to him. What's going on behind the scenes? And you will never find out from the LA Times and the wimps over there. Maybe the Daily News, where they have some reporters, will tell us. Ask him. What's going on? Do you want the job or not? I'm afraid he doesn't, he's afraid that if he gets involved, he may end up in prison because there's a federal investigation of the pension funds. HollywoodHighlands.org. Joseph, either he wants it or he doesn't.
Okay, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks passes. I do not see Mr. Juan Akala. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
That's correct, but... 11 ayes.
That item is received and filed.
Okay. Okay, we'll do 13, Arnold. You have a card on 13, and Juan Akala, and I think Mr. Walsh as well. 13.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. This refers to Street Revenue, Street Furniture Revenue Fund.
What do we have?
And there's been a lot of items on your agendas over the course of a year or two with these different categories of revenue. Because now that you're doing the budget, and you're discussing general fund revenue and structural fund deficit and general fund deficit, there's no place on your budget discussing, discussion, to discuss city council funding. Street furniture revenue, AB 1290 revenue, landfill revenue, bus bench revenue, advertising revenue, all the revenues that go to the city council, council offices, which essentially should be going and should have a word to the public. I believe, well, I'm going to run out of time on this. I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh.
Minute five. Actually, yeah. In any case, this is to spend $17,000, $12,700, to a company called El Mico Signs. For what? For a sign, a monument. What is the sign going to say? You don't tell us here. Look at Number 13. Check it out. Construct and install a monument sign for a median island. We're cutting paramedics, and we're putting up signs. We have no idea what the signs say. But congratulations, for the first time in 30 years, you appointed an invisible man who wasn't even here, doesn't even want the job at the pension board.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item.
He's out of time.
Mr. Alacon.
Councilmembers, I, for the public, this highly controversial sign will say, "Welcome to Mission Hills." Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, why don't we do Item 14? Okay, John Walsh, I believe, is out of time. Juan Akala and Arlene from LAUSD, I don't see her. Okay, so if I could get Juan Akala, so he's not here. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
We'll go to Item 15, where I had cards from Mr. Walsh, who's out of time, and Juan Akala, who does not appear to be here. So on Item 15, excuse me, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us to Item 1. Okay, Mr. Sacks, you're on Item 1. And how much time does Mr. Sacks have?
Two minutes.
Good, you're good.
Thank you very much. Again, I bring up this item not based on the funds that are to be collected, and these would be directed to the general fund, but the fact that it mentions annual inspection costs. And again, in the budget discussions, we hear a lot of allocation of city resources. Now, if these same three properties qualified for the foreclosed, lighted ordinance that the city enacted, they'd be collecting $7,000 a week, $1,000 a day, $7,000 a week. Same city resources. So you say it's a quality-of-life issue. But more importantly, it's the process of the legislation, moving legislation through budget committees only to table the enforcement. What is the purpose of doing that? You spend money on the front, and you spend money in the back, and the public ends up paying. You need to have more concerns. And again, this is general funds. This isn't money that goes to the council. It actually should be money that's allocated to the neighborhood councils, if it's allocated anywhere, because they are there. They are on the front lines of what's happening in the neighborhood. They should have the opportunity to collect these funds. Councilman Garcetti mentioned giving a percentage of funds to the neighborhood council. This is the kind of funds they should get.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Now, do I have Wanda and Peter Jamerson here? Wanda and Peter? No? Okay, so let's vote on Item 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, do we have a special one, or?
Yes, Mr. President, a special one has been circulated. Mr. Alacon will speak to the findings.
Mr. Alacon.
Councilmembers, Mr. Coretts and I conducted the, under his chairmanship, conducted a hearing on the issue of the Fire Chief transferring firefighters that would otherwise serve on truck companies to ambulance services. And that is going to begin, at this time, on Sunday, the 5th of May. This matter is to consider new information that came to the committee, where his management team, when asked the question, would this, would the truck companies be safer, he said there would be increased risk. And then I pursued that question and said, "Does that mean they would be less safe?" And he said, "Yes." So I think that all the information that was received by the council prior to this did not indicate a safety hazard on the trucks. And now his management team has testified that, in fact, it will have a negative impact on safety, going from five firefighters to four. So for that reason, I wanted us to consider it, and that's why I'm asking for, to make the findings, that this is new information that we should consider asking the chief to stall his implementation.
Mr. Englander.
Yes, I actually wanted to thank you for bringing this motion forward, and I appreciate it. This is a dialogue we should always have and always scrutinize. We did hear this matter in public safety. It was stated by the Chief Officers Association, as well as UFLAC, that they do have a concern over safety issues as well. They've said it to the Budget and Finance Committee, and they've said it to the media. It's been in the press for at least a week, if not more now. And so we've all been made aware of their concern. When asked the chief directly, he indicated that he didn't have as much of a concern in that regard. But what I'd like to do is ask, since it's not necessarily new information, but new information, I guess, from the committee perspective this morning, is if the chief can respond to that, and if he's been asked to be here directly or not. If he's not here, I'd like to know why he's not here. If we put a motion like this in, and this is a big issue, was he made aware and asked to be present to comment on this or not? I don't know.
Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, I think this is a motion that is appropriate in its urgency, because the discussion prior to today was always that this is a safe change. The fact that in our committee, there were questions about its safety certainly leads me to believe that the Myers- Millius-Brown Act requirement that changes in wages, terms and conditions of employment, et cetera, this is certainly a change in the conditions of employment if there would be a change to a less safe level of deployment. And for that reason, I think this is an item that needs to be heard in urgency and should be heard today.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I think we were here a while back, where we had the Fire Chief here, and everybody complained that paramedic response time had gone up, and everyone was concerned about people not getting the paramedics there for heart cases and all that other. The chief of the Fire Department, approved by the commission, moved 22 of 3,000 firefighters to a place in which we would criticize him if he didn't move people where the need is. 85% of the Fire Department's workload is paramedic service. So if we sit here today and tell the Fire Chief he can't move 22 people to create a better atmosphere for the public for paramedic service, because someone comes in and says, "If you move one firefighter, it will be more dangerous," as long as we've been here, the Fire Department deals in danger. That's what their job is. And to say you're going to eliminate all danger because of one person, yet we're going to tell the public that great discussion we had months ago of making sure paramedics were more available is now secondary to two union officials showing up and saying, "I think it's more dangerous." Yet the Fire Chief was the only one at the table when we talked about paramedic response time. No one brought a union official, no one brought anyone else up to the table. The Fire Commission and the Fire Chief, and if I look around this table, not one of us has ever deployed a firefighter, not one of us has gone on a fire call, not one of us has been in the situation to run the Fire Department. So I would hope we let the Fire Chief be the Fire Chief and allow the Fire Chief to make deployment decisions well within his charter responsibilities. So I would hope we allow the Fire Commission, which is somewhat independent, and also the Fire Chief, that's the general manager, do their job.
Mr. Zine.
Well, thank you. The Fire Department fought to get the 10th man back. And when you look at what the truck, which is the hook and ladder, that fifth person has a particular purpose, the person on the engine has a particular purpose, and the people in the paramedic units have a particular purpose. Hours' wages, working conditions, that's a condition that needs to be met. I know that the discussions that have been taking place on this say that, "Well, the commission said, oh, it's okay. They didn't really take an action on it. That way, we can do 245." The bottom line is, I personally believe it jeopardizes public safety. Right now, we've got many fires that are in surrounding counties where we have dispatched firefighters, we have dispatched equipment, and we have a high fire urgency taking place right now with red flag alerts. So I think it serves the public to maintain the integrity of the Fire Department, where you have sufficient personnel doing what they are to do. And if you talk about the BLS and the ALS, that's basic life support, when you start putting out those 800 ambulances, which is the basic life support, they don't have the paramedics. They can't do what a paramedic can do. They basically will take a person and transport him to a hospital. So what we'll see is two ambulances go into calls instead of one. My focus on it, we have a fire season that's here, we have fires blazing in adjoining counties. Thank goodness, to my knowledge, nothing in Los Angeles City at this particular time. But taking that 10th, taking that person off that truck, that one person, and redeploying, I think is a disservice on public safety. I said it in committee, I don't support it. I still don't support it. And I think in the aspect of public safety, we need to do whatever we can do to maintain that integrity of the Fire Department, where they have that purpose. If we need to hire more paramedics, then hire more paramedics. If we need more ambulances, then put more ambulances with the personnel. The Fire Department has reduced their workforce. Over 318 folks have left, attrition, retired, et cetera. That department has not been restaffed, and I know there was an issue about attrition. But the fact of the matter is, if we can find money to have the folks at the animal shelters protect the animals at night, we should be able to find the funds to have our firefighters deployed to protect us and keep them on the rigs that they're supposed to be on, providing public safety and public service. I do not support the chief's mission on this. I think it's a disservice to public safety.
Okay, before we go to our next speaker, this vote is just on the findings, so I'll leave everyone on the queue. But let's vote on the findings. And is there an announcement you need to make, Mr. City Attorney? So we're good. So where it relates to the findings? Okay, then that's good. Okay, then we'll take care of that. Mr. Labange.
Members, Mr. Zine, you said the Fire Department fought, Mr. Han, the mayor of Los Angeles fought, this council fought. When I first got elected, one of the things I campaigned on is that.
I'm going to have to jump in. I'm sorry. The initial discussion has to be just on the findings, whether the findings are sufficient.
No, it was my mistake, Mr. Labange. I should have done it from the very beginning. So we'll put you back on the, yes, Mr. Weezer.
Well, I just wanted the City Attorney to state what the rule is with respect to the findings, and then state what the facts are here, why, the reason for calling this for a special.
Speak to that, Mr. City Attorney.
Based on the information I have before me, I don't believe the findings are sufficient to support an urgency Rule 23 matter.
What's the rule, and what's your rationale for that?
The two findings that need to be made pursuant to the Brown Act, not just Rule 23, pursuant to state law, is that there has to be an immediate need to act, and the need has to arise since the posting of today's agenda. There's an, there is an immediate need to act because the deployment plan starts May 5th. However, I don't believe the second prong has been satisfied. The deployment plan, the rollout date of May 5th was discussed at the Fire Commission hearing on April 25th. At that meeting, there were safety concerns raised and meeting fur concerns raised, so I don't believe it meets the second prong.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on the findings? Mr. Englander, on the findings.
Just on the findings, and, because I think we all have the same concerns that everybody else has shared, but on the findings, you'd mentioned there was a Fire Commission meeting. Did they also have a second, a special meeting on this as well, I believe? I believe there were two, if I recall, and this was brought up at both of them. Do you have that information?
No, I do not.
Okay. Well, as the Chair of Public Safety, that's what was shared with me. And perhaps one of the chiefs could answer that question. Were there two?
The meeting on the 25th was a special meeting.
It was a special meeting, okay.
Let's vote. Mr. Coretts.
Just to reiterate on the findings. Just to reiterate on the findings, the thing that occurred today was, management has said this is a safe proposal previously, it was circulated as such. Today in committee, they expressed concerns in essence about the safety impact. So there's no way to anticipate that previously that happened in committee. I think that changes everything essentially on the issue. And so thus, the urgency combined with the occurrence taking place within the last 24 hours.
Okay, just let me respond quickly to this. There may be a better way for us to move forward, even though I lean towards the suggestions by Councilman Parks. You know, I believe we put this individual in charge to run the fire department, and we should try to support him when we can. But maybe, I know he wants this to begin Sunday, but Mr. City Attorney, is there a way for us to continue this till Tuesday and have him appear and bring a representative from the Fire Commission? And then a lot of the questions that have been raised, maybe we can get those questions answered. And we're basically talking about a three-day delay.
Just looking at the language of the Rule 23, it is a request of the fire department. The council's not ordering them. So this could be converted into a Rule 16 motion, placed on the Tuesday agenda, and request the fire department to discuss it. In that way, it would be adequately agendized and be sufficient for Brown Act purposes.
Okay, so members, I want to try to get a feel for how you guys feel. We'll start off with Mr., well, you have a point of information, Mr. Zine.
A point of information, I understand that people get assignments, and people have been assigned to this new plan. And if we do something on Tuesday, and they've been assigned on this plan, the point of information is, Tuesday may be too late, since I understand this is going to take effect on Monday or Sunday. That's the concern I have. Because they, they've been assigned to different locations. And if that's the case, our Tuesday will be behind the curve.
Okay, then we can just vote this up or down now. I mean, I'm trying to do it in a way that elevates comfort levels to the best of our ability. I think we would make a request to the chief to hold off until Tuesday. And if that doesn't work for you guys, then we will vote up or down. Now, wait a minute, I'm going to go back to the queue, because I do have a lot of folk on the queue, and so I want to take them in order on the findings. So, Mr. Labange, we're still on the findings.
On the findings?
Just the findings.
If I'm incorrect, stop me. I think the president has a concept. I do believe right now they're already upstaffing due to the high humidity. So as far as that may be in flux, and if this was something we took up on Tuesday, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That was just a suggestion.
Well, that was a good suggestion. Yeah. But I would just say, Mr. Wesson, I have a whole long thing I would talk about, but your suggestion on the Tuesday may get more members here to be able to achieve our goal to really hit the issue of safety, which is currently happening every day, every hour. But there is reductions in staffing on trucks that will affect the populace, which is so key.
Mr. Allen.
Specifically, just so you know, Mr. Wesson, our Station 29 on Venice and Wilshire will lose someone off their truck. You have a highly densely populated area, we have it the fourth to the east of there. This is impactful.
I understand. Mr. Alacon.
If the president of the council would agree to convey to the chief that we would like him to stall his implementation plan for a few days so that we can have him report to the council in whole, I'd be happy to pull back my motion. But I do want to stress that this is an urgency. And quite frankly, there have been a lot of decisions that this council has backed up under the same theory of just supporting our chief. And they've thrown, they've flown back in our faces, particularly with regard to response times and other issues. I don't think that it is our job to not review our general manager's functions in this case. And by the way, the chief agrees with me wholeheartedly, all these positions are needed, all of them are needed. And my goal is not to stop him from creating more ambulance services, but to find a way through the budget process to get more ambulance services rather than cutting, robbing Peter to pay Paul. We've got a $200 million reserve fund, a rainy day fund. What are we waiting for, a firestorm? Is that what we're waiting for? That's exactly what I'm concerned about, because I lost 500 homes in the Sayer Fire, and I want to see it again.
Okay, to the findings. So I'm going to go through the list. And, Mr. Weezer, are you prepared to speak on the findings?
Yes, on the findings, I just want to reiterate the, look, at the end of the day, before we get to the merits, our city attorney has advised us about that this is not a proper Rule 23. And I am concerned that if we allow this, it's going to really put a broad stroke on what we allow for Rule 23. This is a policy matter that we got new information on, something that's policy-related. It's not an emergency as defined by state law. That's what the Rule 23 says, an emergency defined by state law. But this does not meet that criteria.
Okay, I believe Mr. Keretz has gone. Mr. Englander.
And I just got confirmation, in fact, that it did go through two hearings, in fact, at the Fire Commission. Look, on the findings, I absolutely would like to have the chief here, I'd like to go through this. I think the request by the council president to ask him to come here, convert it to a Rule 16. My concern is not, I have a grave concern that I'm not going to talk about, because that's not what we're speaking about in terms of the findings. But on the findings, it's the precedent setting. As the Chair of Public Safety, I constantly have to work with the police department and the fire department. The police department is redeploying folks every single day. It's part of their function in the deployment. We need to question all of those efforts all the time as it relates to safety of officers. It's the same thing in the fire department. We've got to question those things, they have to be done transparently. But to do it procedurally and correctly is also critical, that we protect the legal integrity of this process. And so if it means just having him here Tuesday, I'm all for that. But by all means, I think we should do something. And if there's a way to do that and get him here Tuesday, then I'm fully in support. But I do have concern over usurping authority in terms of the process. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Parks, is this on the findings?
Yes. I was just wondering if the chief, he may be the only person that went to the meeting on the 23rd, or is it?
I don't think they are prepared to.
I just wanted to know if what we were talking about was discussed at the commission meeting. If it was, then the emergency seems to fit with Dion and Mr. Weezer said, is there really emergency if these issues were discussed on the 23rd? And it wouldn't be labeled as new information this morning?
No, I got it. I got it. Again, now, Mr. Zine, is this regarding the findings?
No, no. I support exactly what you want to do. I just want to make sure we can forestall it, that's all.
Okay, then why don't, Dion, why don't you articulate what it is I want to attempt to do? Mr. Alacon withdraws his motion.
My intent would be to reintroduce it as a Rule 16 with your commitment to call the chief and ask him to stall for three days, that would be fine. And report to the council.
Mr. City Attorney?
So in other words, this Rule 23 motion would be converted to a Rule 16 motion and a request to place it on the Tuesday agenda.
Okay, so let's open the roll, or we don't have to vote? Okay, so then without objection. All right, somebody better get the chief on the phone for me. Oh, oh, you know what? I did have cards that were submitted, and even now, the city attorney speaking to the mic and indicate.
Because the matter did not survive a vote on the findings, the matter is not before them, it's just a motion that's being introduced and referred or placed on the agenda for next Tuesday.
All right, so then we can try to, Mr. Labange, let's try to complete the general public comment. I have Juan Akala, I've got Michael Hubman, and Brian Barajas. If you would please come forward. Please come forward.
Can I?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Perhaps, I shouldn't have used the word "did not survive" on the findings. There wasn't a vote on the findings, and so it's converted to Rule 16.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Is Mr. Kocorian on the queue? No, okay, all right. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Michael Hubman, and I'm for the Arts District Healing Center. On November 5, 1996, by means of the initiative process, the people passed Proposition 215. Since the passage of Prop. 215, medical marijuana community has organized itself into an effective distribution network. Big Pharma, Big Tobacco, and Big Alcohol did not participate in the buildup of this network, and with no help from government by any measure, in my eye, that's a good thing. Arts District Healing Center was forced to close by a U.S. attorney letter. Way to go, government, you took out the most compliant and civic-minded co-op in the city. Here's what I would offer to back up this high praise. They operated as a cooperative. They taught best practices to the rest of the medical marijuana community, and while always upholding these standards for themselves. They operated as a community center in addition to being a marijuana collective. They provided a platform for non-marijuana, alternative healing practitioners at no cost to themselves or the patient. They participated in the Neighborhood Council activities, they went on walkarounds, they were a sponsor of the Sunshine Kids program. They offered free meals every Friday to all comers, they provided free music from the stage in their lounge, and they operated an art gallery, and so much more. City of Los Angeles, Council District 14, that's no way to treat your best practitioners. If, that's just not fair. If there's some kind of city complicity in requesting of these letters, I think going after your best practitioners is not the way to do it.
Brian Barajas, public comment card we have following this. We'll have a general announcements.
Anyways, so this is a comment, quote, "The Commonwealth can be proud of the fact that in each of its six decades, it has shaped the international response to emergency global challenges. On this, the eve of the U.N. Copenhagen Summit on Climate Change, the Commonwealth has an opportunity to lead once more. The threat to our environment is not a new concern, but it is now a global challenge which will continue to affect the security and stability of millions for years to come. A second area of opportunity for the Commonwealth is nurturing its young. As with the environmental challenges, this area is not new. But while the Commonwealth may rightly celebrate reaching the 60th anniversary, the future of this association lies with the 1 billion who are under 25 years old. The Commonwealth will also need to prove its reliance beyond its own borders and develop a truly global perspective." This is on, close quote, "Opening Ceremony, Commonwealth Heads of Government, 2009, November 27, 2009." Anyways, this is, this is the global change that the Queen Elizabeth has called forth. Now, the problem is, climate change is not what you think, it's actually a global depopulation rate that she has proposed. This is the Commonwealth, which is aka British financial empire. Now, in order to effectively destroy it, you have to pass First Measure, H.R. 129, the Glass-Steagall Law. FDR passed it in order to destroy the British Empire. It's called Commonwealth. It's an empire.
All right, that concludes public comment. We want to then ask any, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for post n. referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Okay, members, any announcements? Mr. Rosendahl.
So much, Mr. President, and I appreciate everybody here around the horseshoe. You know, the Venice Garden Tour is going to be this Saturday, May 4, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Venice Garden and Home Tour is an annual fundraiser benefiting the children of the Neighborhood Youth Association in Venice, California. The self-guided walking tour showcases the unique homes and gardens of the creative Venice Beach community. The tour headquarters is at 1016 Pleasant View Avenue, Venice. Again, that's 1016 Pleasant View Avenue. Now, go there, sign up, and go on the tour. Also on Saturday, a town hall on LAX. Community organizers who engaged in neighborhoods on the airport runway issue in Westchester and Playa del Rey are looking at the next steps of what to do. So there's an event Saturday, May 4, at 1:00 p.m. at the Westchester Senior Center at 8740 Lincoln Boulevard, Los Angeles. I will be there, and if you want more information, go to councilmanrosendahl.com. Also on Saturday, the legendary Venice Beach skaters, as well as skating groups from San Diego and San Francisco, will join homeless advocates in Venice to present an in-line roller skating show to raise awareness about homelessness. The event is taking place Saturday at the Venice Beach Skate Plaza from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, deep breath, folks. Shanna Horowitz's funeral service, as I've mentioned. Shanna is the wife of one of my staffers, Jim Horowitz, who works out of my West LA office. Shanna was a dear friend, and in her senior years enjoyed being a rising star in the art world. We will remember Shanna at her service this Sunday, May 5, from 2:00 to 3:00, at Mount Sinai, Hollywood Hills, 5950 Forest Lawn Drive in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, members? Like to announce the greatest rock and roll band in the history of rock and roll, The Rolling Stones, will be at 11th and Figueroa tonight at L.A. Live Staples Center. I do not have a ticket, so I won't go, but I'll listen to it on K-Earth if K-Earth's playing the concert. Anyway, let's salute The Rolling Stones. Also, this weekend is Big Sunday Weekend. Big Sunday Weekend is very important, it's activity, look at David Levinson, Los Angeles resident, started for the good of helping other people. And finally, this was along with Siggo the Mile, on the morning of the 5th, we will have the Los Angeles River Run in the Griffin Park area. Come on out to Las Feliz, enjoy the run of 5K on the Los Angeles River Run. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd just like to announce that budget and finance will be delayed until 1:45. We will begin in this chambers at 1:45.
Thank you very much. No other announcements, members? Any adjourning motions? I see no adjourning motions. No adjourning motions. Let's go ahead and serve the city of Los Angeles well. This meeting is now concluded. We thank the city clerks, the sergeants of arms, general services, and all those who support, and our own little city attorney, we want to thank him too. Good afternoon.